Thank you. Good evening. I will now call and order the April 17, 2025 Board of Education meeting. We acknowledge the traditional ancestral unceded territory of Chumanj Tangwa, Fernando, Tatele, and our first nation of which we are learning, educating, and living. Mr. Greg Lewis from Local 761, please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. Ms. Cetera, please take the roll call at this time.
Member Cano.
Present.
Member Weisberg.
Present.
Clerk Tabit.
Present.
Vice President Ponser Kamkar.
Present.
President Aga Khanian.
Present. We have five members. We have quorum. Item number five, reporting on closed session. We voted to go with the recommendation regarding item 3E, Student 960029781. Motion was made by Vice President Ponser Kamkar, seconded by Tabit. Eyes were five, no noes. Moving to item six, any adjustments of the agenda, my colleagues?
Yes. Would we please, could we please move 12F up to the top of?
New and unfinished.
New and unfinished business. Yes, please.
I support that.
My colleagues are okay with that. We will move 12F. So be it. 12F it is. Any items for future agenda items? Dr. Weisberg.
Thank you kindly. I would like to figure out a time probably over the summer where we can do a study session on the results of the Hanover research and just talk about student wellness centers and student mental health. Thank you, sir.
Anything else?
Yes.
Clerk Tabit.
I have a couple of things. Last meeting, we had a report on enrollment at each of our school sites. Could we get, and there was conversation about what we do with those numbers and possibly closing schools or not, could we get a report on each one of our schools, which would be, if we were to have to close a school, which would be the best choice, what we could do with that school afterwards, and I'm thinking district office, because of declining enrollment? I think there's at least three that are under 400. So if we could get a report on what that might look like, which one we would, we.
Sure.
The varying, you know what I'm saying, the varying reasons why we would choose one over another, et cetera.
I understand.
So we're ready.
Yeah. I'll create a little bit of a context for those who may not have been at our last board meeting or saw the report. For the first time, we put a very comprehensive report together regarding enrollment. And we broke the data down by individual school site, but we also showed the summative data in terms of how many students we're losing. We have worked with professional demographers, and the trend seems to be that the declining enrollment will continue for several more years. So when you are a school district, when you're working with the County of Los Angeles, one of the benchmarks that you look at is when you start to see a school that's dropping below 400, then you start to really pay attention, keep an eye on that, because there could be room for discussion on whether or not it makes sense to close a school. One of the things that the report highlighted was the fact that we have three schools that are below 400. So for absolute clarity, we're not asking to close a school, we're not at that point of wanting to do anything like that. But I think the request that's coming is, if we're in that situation, what is the criteria by which we would try to make that decision? What are the factors we look at? What are the implications of that? And to start having a discussion so that if we do get to that point in the future, that we're actually prepared for it, and I think I can work with staff and bring something forward in the next couple, next couple of board meetings.
I appreciate that. Thank you, and thank you for putting it correctly. Also, asking for a committee to be created so that we could look at our 501(c)(3)'s, look at our board policies and our admin regs, and have that committee go over it and set up a training course, et cetera, for folks, at least two board members on it, and then a couple of community members.
No problem. Do we have a couple of board members that are interested?
Of course, I'm interested, and I was hoping Abby was. Nope. Okay.
I will, I will put something together.
Someone will come up.
Yeah, we'll work on that. No problem.
Someone, someone, someone. And then I have a third thing, kind of a public information, but for the board. The information, a report gathering use of facility requests, permit requests, the bills, and if and when they were paid or not. I don't know if we can do that, but for gyms and fields for the last two years, today.
Okay.
So '23, '24 till tomorrow.
You got it. Is that something that you're okay with if we just send that data to the board?
Yes, that's all it needs to be for now.
You got it. Thank you.
Vice President Ponser Kamkar.
Thank you, President Aga Khanian. I would like for the board and the public to receive some education. We recently passed a bond measure, but there's been a lot of talk in the community about a parcel tax, whether it is district-initiated or citizen-initiated. So I'd love to understand the differences between those and what our timeline would be if we were to approach initiating a parcel tax. Thank you.
No problem.
Thank you. Speaking of bond, also, is it possible to at least do kind of a recap from the previous bond, where the money is? There were some questions about, like, from the folks in the community, like, what's remaining, what's not. Just kind of a recap, kind of refresh our course as we're moving to the extension of the.
No problem. I just want to synchronize with you. Is that something you want to have done as a presentation, or is this information that you would like us to send to the board?
I prefer a presentation.
Okay.
Is this separate from the annual report that the SFOC does?
I think. Are we going to be doing one as this SFOC? I mean, we're listing, we're looking for applicants for a new one. So how does the old one maybe get closed?
Let's have Andy respond to that.
Yep, the SFOC is meeting. That's the School Facility Oversight Committee, the Citizen Oversight Committee responsible for monitoring our bond. Their next meeting is in a week and a half. They've already been working on the draft. I've seen the chair exchange a few emails on it, working with staff as well. So I anticipate that in early May, the annual report of the SFOC will be approved, and I'll be coming to the board thereafter.
So if it's okay, then we'll just come back in May.
Work for me.
Okay. Anything else? All right, thank you. Item A, Presentation and Recognitions, Presentation of Burbank Arts for All Foundation Spring Grant Cycle. Dr. Macias.
Good evening, Dr. Aga Khanian, board members, Dr. Paramo Superintendent, and the Burbank Community. Very proud to welcome to the podium a good friend of the district, Caroline Solberg. She's the Grants and Giving Committee Chair of the Burbank Arts and Education Foundation. She has a presentation on the spring grant cycle. So Ms. Caroline Solberg, please.
Good evening, President Aga Khanian and School Board members. Superintendent Paramo, District Staff, community, we're really, the Burbank Arts and Education Foundation is thrilled to be here this evening to share with you the grant from the spring grant cycle that we were able to fund. There were 12 grants that were funded for 10 different schools. The first one, we provided money toward Edison's Outdoor Classroom Project. We funded a second-grade animation project in a classroom at Emerson. We funded dramatic play furniture for a transitional kindergarten class at Roosevelt. We funded imaginative play flexible seating for a special education class at Jefferson. We funded tabletop piano keyboards for the transitional kindergarten, kindergarten, and first-grade music programs at Miller Elementary. We funded lunchtime games at Washington. It's a variety of games to engage students during lunchtime. One of the other things we funded at Washington is sort of a pilot program. It's a series of stencils and paint, and they will use those on their playground, their asphalt. But the stencils indicate to students, they suggest different kinds of physical activities. So almost like a hopscotch, except for, you know, spreading around, different topics. And they're going to try this out, and if it's a success, they're going to share the stencils with the other elementary schools, and hopefully we'll get a lot of grant requests for more paint. At Luther, we funded two programs. One was Shakespeare workshops, and the other is a virtual author event where students will be interacting with a live author and be able to do a question and answer during part of it. We helped provide funding for some special ed classroom that needed science supplies at Muir. We provided the funding for a Monterey class to go on the Warner Brothers tour. And the Burbank High School is anticipating a larger marching band next year and requested funds to obtain some more uniforms for the marching band, and we helped them out with that. So we're really excited about what we were able to do. We wanted to thank the community for all their support. And I'd also like to take an opportunity to thank all of you and the other staff and teachers and principals that came out for our Ben and Jerry's Day. It was a huge success. We had so much fun. We had so many wonderful comments about how the public responded to you're all being there. They liked the ice cream, but they were really excited about you guys, too. So thank you for your support for the Burbank Arts and Education Foundation. Do you have any questions?
Do you have an estimate of the total dollar value of?
It was just under $30,000.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Nicole Cody was showing me where the outdoor classroom is going to be, and it is going to be really cool.
It looks great, yeah. We, if you want to mark your calendars, in the fall, September 17th, is going to be the state of the schools. And one of the things we're going to do this year is have several stations, tables, providing some information about some of the grants that we have funded in the outdoor classrooms is going to be one of them. So if you want to find out more about it, come check it out.
Thank you, Ms. Solberg. Thank you for your volunteerism, and thank you to the Burbank Arts for All Foundation. I think especially now with all the challenges we have, the more the community knows about this wonderful organization and all you do, the better it is, because, you know, some people still are learning about the organization, and everyone who's listening, all the millions of viewers, you know? It is a nonprofit, it's a 501(c)(3), and you can use that for a tax write-off.
And if you want to learn more about it, you go to BurbankArtsandEducation.BurbankArtsAndEd.org?
We can Google it right now. Thank you very much. Nothing but good news. Speaking of that, 9A Student Representatives, tonight, why don't we have our Burbank Representative, Ms. Rose Elingezian, come on up.
Good evening, Superintendent Paramo, President Dr. Aga Khanian, Vice President Kamkar, Board Members Weisberg, Board Clerk Tabit, and Board Member Cano, along with all distinguished guests present this evening. It is both an honor and a privilege to provide updates from Burbank High School. Provide updates from Burbank High School. I would like to begin by congratulating our Burbank Unified Winter Guard for their outstanding achievement. Their performance titled "Mutekos" earned them first place at the Winter Guard SoCal Championships yesterday. We are immensely proud of our students who participated in this event. Additionally, I am pleased to announce that our ASP elections have been successfully completed, resulting in the election of our new cabinet members and class presence for the upcoming academic year. As April is recognized as Armenian Culture Month, Burbank High School is hosting a series of events each Friday to celebrate this rich heritage. Our activities have included Armenian music in the quad and performances featuring traditional instruments. Furthermore, we will hold our annual Armenian Assembly on April 25th to honor the memory of the Armenian genocide that occurred on April 24, 1915. Thank you for your attention this evening. I welcome any questions you may have.
Next, we have Haik Sambatian from Monterey High School.
Good evening, Board President Aga Khanian, distinguished members of the board, Superintendent Paramo, district staff, and our audience. I am excited to share with you the events that have recently taken place at Monterey High School. In the spirit of fostering joy and solidarity among our students, we recently hosted an egg hunt on campus. This event gave our students the opportunity to embark on an exciting search for eggs filled with treats, panther prizes, and other fun items. It was fun to see smiles, laughter, and teamwork as students embraced the spirit of play and connection. Throughout the month of April, Monterey High is celebrating Armenian Heritage Month. This was a meaningful time for our school community to learn about and reflect on the incredible contributions of the Armenian community, both locally and globally. By honoring Armenian culture and achievements, we continue to deepen our understanding and appreciation of the diverse backgrounds that make our school so special. We are thrilled to highlight an ongoing artistic initiative at Monterey High. Together with a talented community artist, our students have been hard at work designing and creating a mural that will grace our campus and the Independent Learning Academy, ILA. This project not only nurtures creativity, but also instills a sense of pride and ownership in our students as they leave their mark on the school. Finally, I am delighted to share some outstanding individual recognition. Dylan Salcedo, a dedicated 12th grade student, was awarded the Matthew Pavelka Memorial Scholarship. This scholarship, which provides $1,000 per year for four years to support educational expenses, is a testament to Dylan's hard work, resilience, and commitment to excellence. Isabella de La Torre was the winning recipient of the McKinley Elementary School Scholarship. She was awarded $500 to go toward educational expenses. Please join me in congratulating Dylan and Isabella on these wins. These events and accomplishments reflect the spirit of Monterey High School, a place where traditions are celebrated, cultures are honored, creativity is encouraged, and individual achievements are recognized. Thank you for your continued support and commitment to our students' success. Any questions?
Yeah, my colleague. Thank you very much.
Of course.
Lala couldn't be here tonight, but Lala, we're going to miss you. Next item, 9B, Burbank Teachers Association, do we have? No, I don't see any of the, nor CSEA. All right. 9C, reports from the superintendent. Dr. Paramo.
Thank you, sir. At this time, I'd like to invite our Director of Elementary Ed, Ms. Rebecca Harris, to come to the podium.
Good evening, Board President Aga Khanian, board members, colleagues, community, district staff, everyone. The Burbank Unified School District is proud, very proud, to announce the selection of Ms. Tracy Shaw as a new principal at Walt Disney Elementary School. Ms. Shaw brings 20 years of dedicated service to the Burbank USD community. Her journey in education began in 2005 as a classroom teacher at Stevenson, Miller, and Hart Elementary Schools, where she gained valuable experience teaching across various grade levels. Ms. Shaw then served as an interim curriculum specialist at Hart and Roosevelt Elementary Schools before serving as the full-time curriculum specialist at Edison Elementary School. Her leadership skills were further developed when she became the insistent principal of Jefferson Elementary and, most recently, Monterey High School. Her work across multiple schools within the district has given her a deep understanding of each school community's unique cultural needs. Ms. Shaw has a background in Kagan, engagement strategies, Project GLAD, systematic ELD, step-up-to-writing thinking maps, and gate strategies, among many other learnings. She has also served as a mentor teacher in the induction program. She holds a bachelor's degree in Pan-African Studies and a master's in Educational Leadership from Cal State University Northridge. She also possesses a California Multiple Subject Teaching credential and an administrative credential. As a proud parent of children attending BUSD schools, she is deeply invested in the Burbank School community. Ms. Shaw's breadth of knowledge and experience will add to the success of Walt Disney Elementary. As we embark upon this 2025-2026 school year transition, Burbank Unified School District would also like to acknowledge and express our appreciation for Principal Michelle Green's dedicated service to the school district and the Walt Disney School community. Now, please join us in welcoming and congratulating Tracy Shaw as the new principal at Walt
I'm a little nervous because I was just seeing my, my big guy here in person, and I was so proud. Good evening, Board President Aga Khanian and members of the board, Dr. Paramo and our district staff. It's truly an honor to stand before you today as the new incoming principal of Walt Disney Elementary. Words cannot fully express how thrilled I am to join this diverse community. As an educator, I've always believed that schools are more than buildings where learning takes place. They are spaces where children take risks, they make mistakes, and they grow into confident, kind, and capable individuals. I'm excited for the opportunity to collaborate with such a dedicated team of teachers, staff, and the parent community as well. Together, we will celebrate student achievements, embrace challenges as opportunities to grow, and cultivate an atmosphere where curiosity and creativity flourish. Thank you for entrusting me with this responsibility. I'm excited to roll up my sleeves and listen and learn and lead with an open heart. And so I want to share that vision with you, and I thank you this evening, and I'm going to take a breath because my nerves are all over the place, but thank you very much, and I'm really happy to be joining.
Any of my colleagues, any? Vice President Cano.
Oh, thank you. I'm so excited about this, not just as a board member, but as a Disney parent. I just think this is a great choice for our little community. I think you'll find that Disney's a really special school. And your experience throughout the district, I think, is going to be invaluable. Your experience as a DI parent, I think, is going to be great. It was mentioned in her bio, it's just something I know.
And they are here.
And they are here, and I'm sure they can speak great Spanish. But I think, you know, we, it is a very diverse community, it's a very opinionated community, but it's, it's a great group. So we're really happy to have you, and I think what I'm most excited about is you've spent so much time in BUSD, and I really see you spending a lot of time at Disney, and I think that's really what our school needs. So I'm so excited.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Weisberg.
I just want to say welcome, and the number of emails and texts I got, just, it was like a collective cheer went up in the community when it was announced that you were going to be the new principal. So I just want to let you know, not from a pressure standpoint, but from just a collective support and excitement and enthusiasm standpoint. And, you know, as a, as a teacher, I think there's nobody better to lead a school than somebody who has started off as a teacher and moved through all those different things, who never forgets what it's like to be those boots on the ground. So I just want to say, I don't know you well yet, I'm really excited to get to know you, but literally everything I've heard from our community members has been just a rave review.
Thank you.
So all the work you've been doing thus far has been so well-received and appreciated, and I can't wait to, to work with you moving forward.
Thank you.
Yes, Clerk Tabit.
Thank you. I think one of the hardest things in the world is to step in as the new principal of such an amazing elementary school as Walt Disney, but Abby said it correctly, like, that's a tight-knit school, and everybody knows each other, and it's that whole neighborhood thing, that's a tough gig. So I, from what I've heard, you're the woman for the job. So good luck to you. I look forward to getting to know you better, and really and truly, best of luck.
Thank you.
Board Member Cano.
I just want to say congratulations. I'm the new kid on the block. It's kind of wearing off, though, but, so congratulations, so we're here for you, you know that.
I think you get to say it for six months, and that's it. No, I'm just kidding.
The rule is six months, Board Member Cano. After that, you can't use that line anymore. It's a board policy. Just wanted to congratulate you, and I've said this before, I'll say it again, we're here, we're one big family, so if you need anything, please reach out to us.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, and congratulations again. All right, now we are going to item 10, Request to Address the Board, Public Communication on Agenda Items and on any subject within the jurisdiction of the school board. An individual or group representative present this evening may address the Board of Education on any agenda items or any subject within the jurisdiction of school board by completing a white request card and turning it to Ms. Cetera. Speakers are requested to state their name prior to the speaking to the board. Not more than five minutes may be allowed to each speaker, except by the unanimous consent of the Board of Education. The superintendent may refer to the matter to the proper department for review. The district is providing alternatives to in-person attendance for viewing and participating. Ms. Cetera, do we have any virtual public speakers? Oh, she's gone.
No public.
No, we don't. All right, thank you very much. All right, first, we have Jessica Stamen. Hi, Jessica, how are you?
Hi, everybody. So I'm Jessica Stamen. I'm going to be speaking, and then when my time is up, I'm going to be passing to Meredith Neal, who's going to be speaking with her amazing, brilliant children. So we are so happy to be here. First of all, we just want to thank the school board. We are in awe of what you do. We're both mothers to Jefferson students, so we see, you know, your work every day. We really want to thank you for being wonderful allies, particularly to the LGBTQ+ community, and ensuring that all of our kids learn the values of tolerance, acceptance, and empathy. It means so much. In response to a recent incident in which over 60 parents wrote a letter to our principal at Jefferson against LGBTQ representation and against these values, we, we wrote our own letter. And our letter has been signed by over 90 parents and students from Jefferson. And we wanted to share this letter because we feel like it's relevant to the entire district, and we want to encourage you to keep up the good work and to explore if any more steps can be taken to spread tolerance and to correct misinformation. So here's the letter. Dear Principal Young and Jefferson staff, Dear Principal Young and Jefferson staff, we are writing to you as concerned parents, students, and members of the school community who care deeply about the well-being and the safety of all students at Jefferson. Over the past few years, many of us have heard comments, we've heard comments made by other parents that were homophobic, transphobic in nature, and we know that many teachers have received calls from parents using anti-LGBTQ rhetoric and quoting homophobic and transphobic misinformation. These remarks are deeply troubling, and they don't reflect the values of inclusivity, respect, and acceptance that we believe should be at the heart of our school's culture and the culture of our district. We also know of an incident, at least one incident, in which a trans child was bullied at school. In this incident, other children refused to play with her, saying explicitly that, as Christians, they could not play with someone who was trans. And when I heard this, I just, I'm tearing up thinking about it, it just broke my heart. As parents, we want all children, regardless of their sexual orientation or gender identity, to feel seen and safe and supported, right, in their learning environment. No child should have to fear judgment, discrimination, or exclusion simply for being who they are. Even children who are cisgender and, and who may not yet know their sexual orientation in elementary school, they may have family members who are LGBTQ plus, and it's critical that these children don't feel ashamed of their relatives or fear judgment or discrimination against their families. We kindly ask that the school continue to foster a welcoming and affirming environment for all students through direct communication with parents and students, and through ensuring that the LGBTQ plus community is represented at events, on the DEI board, et cetera, in the same way that other underrepresented groups are. Our first priority is clear communication to students and parents that Jefferson, and hopefully all of Burbank USD, is an inclusive space for LGBTQ plus parents, students, and their families. Many parents and children may not understand, oh, sorry, simply saying that the school doesn't allow bullying or that it's an inclusive space in general isn't enough, we've seen that. Many parents and children may not understand that inclusivity and tolerance need to extend to gender identity and sexual orientation. It needs to be made explicitly clear that humans come in a range of gender identities and a range of sexual orientations, just as they come in a range of races, ethnicities, and religions, and that discrimination against anyone based on gender identity or sexual orientation will not be tolerated, in the same way the school should never tolerate discrimination based on race, religion, or any other factor. And with that, I will pass to the wonderful Meredith and her wonderful family.
Note, we are aware that many of the parents who are protesting against any acknowledgement of LGBTQ plus individuals and culture say they are concerned because discussion of gender identity or sexual orientation is not developmentally appropriate because it relates to sex. It is critical that we remind them that gender identity has nothing to do with sex, and homosexuality has no more to do with sex than heterosexuality. It is no more sexual to say someone has two dads than to say they have a mom and a dad. It is easy to explain what it means to be trans, gay, lesbian, or bi to a child in a way that is developmentally appropriate, and we are happy to recommend books which do so. We believe that this kind of communication needs to come from the top and needs to reach all parents, in the same way the principal communicates to parents about other issues at the school. A letter sent home would be a good start, as would information sessions available to all parents. And then, and in addition to educating parents, the students also need to be directly taught that acceptance and tolerance relate not just to race, though, of course, that's critically important, but also to gender, identity, religion, et cetera. Additionally, with the LGBT community increasingly under attack in our country, it is more important than ever that allies, like we know our Burbank schools to be, are loud and proud in their support. Having a pride table at the multicultural fair, for example, is an important signal to LGBTQ kids and those with LGBTQ loved ones that they are seen, accepted, and welcome. Similarly, just as it's important for Black students to see their heritage celebrated on the DEI board, or for female students to see and celebrate the accomplishments of world-changing women, it is critical that LGBTQ students and students with LGBTQ family members see that they too are represented, and their contributions are valued. And it is more important than ever that we normalize LGBTQ people and issues for all of our children so that they see that this is, so that they see this as just another kind of difference, and not something that should be shameful or stigmatized. We believe that by working together, we can help ensure Jefferson is a place where every student feels safe and empowered to thrive. Thank you for your continued dedication to making our school community one of kindness, respect, and equity. We look forward to your response and are happy to sit down at any time to discuss this further. Signed, 91 members of the Jefferson community. And I'd just like to say, this is a very personal matter for me. This is my daughter Jamie, and she's transgender, and she was bullied at Jefferson. So, I'd really like you to take to heart what we had to say in our letter and what Jessica so bravely has undertaken. Thank you, Jessica, for your support.
Thank you, guys, and thank you for coming up here with us and being brave, and thank you so much.
Thank you for your time.
So, by the way, we will, we will respond after all the comments, so this is, so don't leave. Thank you. All right, the next speaker is David Janbasyan.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is David Janbasyan, and I am the co-president of Global Unity Club at Burbank High School. A little bit about myself is that for two years I have been in the mock, been in the mock trial club, and for one year I've been in speech and debate. I like to debate, and I like to talk a lot about controversial topics, but mainly what I'm here today, what I'm here to do today is to talk about mine and my friend Vladimir's club, Global Unity. At Global Unity, it is a club where we find issues in our society, in our school, in our city, and we take these issues to the classroom, and we debate about solutions how we can solve these issues. And after we've derived a solution to these issues, we take action, and we go, and to the best of our ability, we try to solve these issues. I'm going to lend the mic over to Vladimir to continue this. Thank you.
Yeah, Vladimir, can I also, I see your card, your last name as well, just for the record.
Hello, my name is Vladimir, Vladimir Hovonisian. Let me introduce myself. I'm part of Burbank show choir, and I'm also, I was one year, one year in speech and debate. I'm founder and president of Global Unity Club. I got elected as ASB secretary this year, so I'm going to work also with ASB, La Rose. And I want to talk about what our club does and what we're, what we are currently now. We are working with our school's assistant principals, principals on making a navigational system in our school, like signs where to go, for example, room numbers, right? So, freshmen and newcomers and people who change their schedule can see where their rooms are and navigate very easily. I'm here also to tell you that we are ready, we understand that BUSD, our district, has problems, for example, a budget problem, we understand, and we know that you are trying to use some methods, for example, a partial tax, right, in order to implement it, to gain some budget, more funds. And I want to tell, I want to just tell you, me as ASB secretary next year, also me and David as the leaders of Global Unity, we're ready to cooperate with you. If you have any problems, any issues, we're ready to discuss about it and find solutions, yeah, as a, like, student body, okay? Yeah, thank you so much, thank you. We have also our business cards, do you want us to give it now? Yeah, okay.
All right, thank you very much. Next, we have Terry Norton. Terry?
Good evening, board members. I'm Terry Norton, a 50-year member of International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers, IBW Local 11, and resident of Burbank for over 50 years. I raised my children in Burbank, where they were educated in the Burbank schools. My children's children were educated in the Burbank schools. I'm here to share my experiences working with the Community Workforce Agreement. The CWA will benefit the citizens and business of Burbank first and foremost. The CWA will utilize tradespeople who are Burbank residents, keeping them close to home, working in their community. The CWA will provide a structured career path for those seeking work in the building trades. I myself began my career over 50 years ago in the electrical apprenticeship program. As changes occurred over the years, the IBW provided me the training I needed to perform electrical services. The businesses of Burbank will benefit, providing necessary support to the work projects. I have seen firsthand the quality, community participation that results from the CWA. In the end, a community workforce agreement for Burbank schools just makes good sense. I urge you to approve the CWA with the building trades. I thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Ruben Mendoza.
Good evening, board. My name is Ruben Mendoza. I'm a 19-year member of the IBW. On behalf of IBW Local 11 and the building trades, we strongly urge the Burbank School Board to approve the Community Workforce Agreement with the building trades. Because of the Community, Community Workforce Agreement, your future projects will be built by residents, veteran apprentices, and folks who you may need, who may need a second shot in life, who are starting their careers in the building trades. Our apprenticeship is currently training roughly over 1,300 apprentices, and they need on-the-job experience. Our Journey members are the best-skilled and trained workforce in the country who have passed the rigorous apprenticeship to get their Journey Card. Your future projects will be built the way they should, not just by the best-skilled and trained workers in the country, but by people who live in the community. I myself am a 30-year resident of Burbank that went through the apprenticeship. Building trades is a great way to go, it's a ticket to the middle class. Thank you.
Thank you. So, the next card, it's, unless your name is Community Workforce Agreement, they forgot to put their names, so I'll have Ms. Ketero maybe pass around, see who maybe recognizes the handwriting, because I'm not good at that, so. Joe Gallardo, followed by Elliot Cho.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Joe Gallardo, and I'm a sheet metal worker with Smart Local Union 105. I am here to ask for your support, the Community Workforce Agreement with the Los Angeles and Orange County Building Trades. This agreement means local workers like me can stay closer to home and spend more time with our families, and put our skills to work building the best possible facilities for the students and staff of the Burbank Unified. These projects are a chance to invest in both the future of our schools and the workers who live here. Thank you very much for your undivided attention. Thank you.
Right, next we have Elliot Cho, followed by Joaquin Stalwart.
Well, it's good to see all of you again. It's only been less than a month since we last encountered with each other. I'll give a proper greeting. Good evening, President Aga Khanian, Vice President Kamkar, Board of Education members and district leadership, and everyone also here at City Hall. I'm here to go ahead and just give a little recap of what we talked about last time, because the last time I showed up, I was basically to introduce the All-City Track Meet that was on its way, and it's already past April 5th, and I'm going to go ahead and just talk a little bit about it. April 5th was the date of the All-City Track Meet. For many who don't know, it was a middle school event between three middle schools, Johnmier Middle School, Dolores Huerta Middle School, and Luther Middle School, and where all the three schools came in together so they could go ahead and display all their student athletes who can compete in a track meet, which took place at Burroughs High School on Memorial Field. And it was a spectacular night, it was a wonderful evening, it ran so smooth, we had lots of kids who came out and represented their schools proudly, and came out to compete hard, there was lots of supporters, there's families, and there's friends. Just about over 1,000 people actually showed up to come to the event, and it was amazing, and the support and the cheering was wonderful, and it was a lifelong memory for them to remember. And it was so different, it was so vastly different, because just a year before this event, we had the All-City Track Meet, and it was only actually Mier Middle School who competed in this one, so we only had Mier kids. And I knew when I did that track meet with my colleagues, it felt so different, it felt like there was ingredients missing, and that included, that meant we needed two other schools. And for this, if people didn't know, once COVID hit, we didn't have the track meet, it wasn't active yet, until we got out of COVID, and Mier was the lone school in 2024. So, in six years, we finally did get Dolores Huerta and Luther Bourbon Middle School to come back, so now it is its original try meet that it used to be. And I can tell you right now, it was so fun, it was great, it was amazing, all the kids got to compete against each other, they got to know each other, some even got to interact with one another, and it's so important. The track meet stands for much more, because it's more than just accomplishment and competition, it's also a moment of being able to bond and know each other for the first time, because it's like a stepping stone, this track meet, because these kids, when they compete and know each other, they're basically introducing themselves to probably future classmates and teammates, you know, that are united in the city of Burbank. So, it was awesome to see that, you know, it was so great, it was a wonderful afternoon, that transition to a starry night evening, you know, so fresh, it was great, and it was just so enjoyable. And this track meet couldn't have been done, it couldn't have been done without the incredible help that we got from all together, the PTSA, teachers, certified staff, and even high school and middle school students who sacrificed their time to come out to this thing, because it takes a lot of hands-on-deck work. And even though, I would love to go ahead and mention every single person's name, I know I'm on due limited time right now, but I do, I would love to go ahead and announce some names who were vital key members in making this track meet happen. At Mier Middle School, we had Doug Nickel, Bronco Sevic, Sadie Rogers, who gave up their time to go ahead and make sure that this track meet took flight on April 5th. And of course, as I said, we had the two other middle schools, and they had their own members who also sacrificed their time to make sure this happened for their kids as well. And that is Sarah Brown from Huerta Middle School, and Kendall Ebert, the PE teacher from also Luther Middle School as well. And they were able to make this happen. We actually met before in advance to talk about how we're going to plan this track meet, how it's going to run. And then, on the day of the track meet, we also had the additional support of people who came out to run events with us, and that also included the Ross family, who managed the high jump, Darren Wolfe, who was our official starter, Mike DeCaro for the long jump, and then we also had the John Burroughs Track Team coaches, who also came out too, which I announced Mike DeCaro, John Peebles, who was also the distance coach, crossing coach from John Burroughs High, managed times, and it was just a great working order, it functioned so well. And by the time the track meet was over, it was just a moment for me to relish it, and for all the kids to relish it, because I enjoyed not only supporting the students that come from Mier, but I also got to interact with the kids of the two other middle schools, and it was just such a great time, it was a time that we got to talk to each other, have fun, be able to compete, and also our principals, all three principals actually came out as well too, from Robin Hatch, Stephen Hubbell, and Greg Miller, who came out to support their own students, but also cheered on everyone else as well, which was significant. also cheered on everyone else as well, which was significant. And it laid down such an impact on the track meet and the kids overall, which made it a lifelong memory. And I can say for, as a kid who grew up in Burbank, and also attended Mier Middle School, and competed in the track meet in 2010, and then 15 years later, get to see it operating once again, and it's just such a beautiful sight to see all the kids being together once again, competing in such a grand event that happens annually. I would also like to give out a huge thanks to President Alkakanyan. I know your involvement and support, also with the Burbank Music Center, who was gracious and giving a generous donation to Mier Middle School to make these special T-shirts. Now, the kids are going to be awarded these T-shirts on May 6th. We have a special awards ceremony at Mier Middle School for our kids. And I'm sure they're going to be very happy to flaunt, to show off, you know, the great shirts that were made. So it's going to be amazing. So now, the next mission is just for the 2026 All-City Track Meet, which is underway. Thank you for your time, and I hope you guys have a great night. Thank you.
We have next, Joaquin Stallworth? No, that was Elliot Cho.
Good evening, Honorable Board. My name is Joaquin Stallworth. I am a union rep for Northern Los Angeles Local 105 Sheet Metal Workers. I am a 25-year member of Local 105 Sheet Metal Workers. On behalf of the Sheet Metal Workers, we strongly urge Burbank School Board to approve the Community Workforce Agreement. Because of Community Workforce Agreements, your future projects will be built by local residents, veterans, and apprentices, who also may be some folks that need a second chance at life and starting their careers. Our apprenticeship is currently training 700 apprentices, and they need this on-the-job experience. Our Journey Members are skilled, trained workforce, the best skilled, trained workforce in the country, and have passed rigorous apprenticeship programs, and have obtained the Journeyman Card. Your future projects will be built the way they should be, not by just skilled workers, but workers that live in the community. This agreement is a game changer to our members and to the Burbank residents. A Community Workforce Agreement, as I heard here, your schools are just dwindling down. I believe that they bring a fair living wage, so that our members could actually purchase homes in your community and bring their children to here and let them learn your education centers. With that, I'll conclude. I know there's tons of people behind me, and we appreciate your time. Thank you.
Next, we have Tim McCardle.
Good evening, Board. My name is Tim McCardle. Been in Burbank, resident of Burbank since 2002. Moved here so my kids could go to the Burbank schools. I have two adult daughters who went through Roosevelt, Luther, and Burrows. So thank you for all of that. Here to encourage the Community Workforce Agreement, so that we can, obviously, the economy, it will help the economy if we have more people working here and have our local workers, people living in the neighborhood, working in the neighborhood. There's a lot of pride that goes into that. So again, I know there are a lot of people behind me waiting to speak. Thank you very much for your time, and please consider, strongly consider, the Community Workforce Agreement. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Next, we have David Gomez Tagle.
Good evening, Board President, Board members, Superintendent Pramal. My name is David Gomez Tagle. I recently served as the Director of Information Technology and Educational Support Services at Burbank Unified. I'm here tonight to express a deep concern and disappointment after being placed on a administrative leave just two weeks into my employment, with the notice of termination effective April 30. I never had a chance to truly show what I could bring to the role. Instead, I was called into a closed-door meeting with my supervisor, Andy Caldwell, without HR present, and confronted with false allegations and deeply damaging allegations towards my character. Let me be clear, these accusations are false. I've always held myself to the highest standards in professionalism and inclusiveness and respect. The claim that I made a derogatory remark towards an ethnic group is simply not true, and it goes against every value I stand for. I've also learned that a complaint was directly sent to a board member. If that's the case, I respectfully request a former copy of that complaint and any related communication, so that I can fully understand what was said and have the opportunity to respond. One of the main allegations is that I discriminated against a colleague by referencing his race and excluding him from a promotion opportunity. In fact, I have email documentation showing that I advocated for this employee, and specifically asked that he be allowed to take the ZAM. This correspondence was with HR, and I submitted for your review early today. I was devastated to see that my position has been posted or reposted on Edjoin the same day I was placed on a administrative leave. I was not given the opportunity to properly defend myself against these allegations, nor a thorough investigation was conducted. Furthermore, I was not informed that I had the right to request a formal hearing before the governing board after receiving this notice. The correspondence I received indicated that the reason for my termination was the alleged inability to perform the duties of my position. However, I was never provided with an evaluation or any specific explanation outlining which responsibilities I was deemed unable to fulfill. Given these circumstances, I respectfully refuse these serious and unfounded accusations and formally request a hearing to address this matter. I left a secure permanent position at LA Unified to join this district. I came here with the best intentions, to serve, to lead, to help move technology forward in support of student success. And now my reputation and livelihood are being jeopardized based on not facts, not a full investigation, but just a hearsay, an assumption. What kind of message are we sending our district employees, so that someone can lose their job over an unproven accusation with no due process? I worked hard to get here. I teach at East Los Angeles College and at Cal S.A. as a professor. I mentor students and I lead by example. I was proud to be part of this district. I still believe in the mission of the public, of public education. If the district moves forward with determination, as stated in my administrative leave notice, I have no choice but to seek legal counsel to protect my name and reputation for what I believe are false and harmful accusations. I thank you all for your time, for standing for fairness, integrity, and truth. Thank you.
All right. We have next, Desiree Lamp.
Good evening, Board members. My name is Desiree Lamp. I am a representative from the Western States Carpenters Union out of Local 661. And I just wanted to give you guys a highlight. I have the privilege of working with the students at John Burrows in the construction program. And I just wanted to share some highlights with you all of all of the great things that they've been able to accomplish in just this one school year. So this is their second year competing in Design Built. Were 12 of the students competing in a two-day competition, April 9th and April 10th. They were sponsored by a signatory contractor, Swinerton, this year, which paid for all of their, all of their materials to compete. They paid for, you know, they went into the classroom, they did hands-on demonstrations with them, and they actually finished or completed their project this year. And so their teacher was also awarded a plaque for his, his participation in the competition. Also, they also competed in Skills USA. They did well again this year. They had eight students, and out of the eight students that initially competed, five of them went on to compete in state. And out of those five, one of them ended up winning second place. So they did really well, and I think that this just goes to show that they're getting the skills that are going to make them successful in the apprenticeship program. And so I strongly encourage you guys and support the CWA, just so that way those students can have that opportunity to join the apprenticeship in their community. Thank you, guys.
Next, we have Josh Christensen.
How are you doing, Board and staff? My name is Josh Christensen with the Western States Regional Councils of Carpenters, and represent 90,000 men and women in the carpenter trades. We have many of those trades here today. We have mill rights, we have bridge builders, we had wood framers, we have steel stud framers, we have finish work, and just some of the name of the few that are here represented with us in the back here. We're asking for support for the CWA. It's a great opportunity for, as we just heard Desiree talk about, the students who work really hard on those classes and those skills competitions, an opportunity for them to go to, to work on their own school district. And I think that it's be awesome. And through the CWA, it makes that possible. And to join the apprenticeship and to, and to continue that path which they, they love, which we've seen so far. There's some videos, I know, that's been sent out. I hope you all get a chance to see some of the, some of the great things they've been doing in those skills. And, and we're excited for, for them to, to have a future in, in the trades. And we're excited for them to work in their home schools, keep them off the freeways, driving down, you know, and keep them, keep them driving right here, and save, save money and save and buy a house here in Burbank. Again, we thank you for all the hard work that you guys have done. We know that this is not easy, and we, we stand behind you guys 100%. And again, we're asking for your support. Thank you.
Next, we have Andrew Paradones Senior.
Good evening, Board members. My name is Andrew Paradones, and I'm from Sheet Metal Workers Smart Local 105. I'm a 12-year tradesman, and I'm here tonight to ask for your support for the Community, Community Workforce Agreement for the LA OC Building Trades. This agreement will allow skilled local workers like myself to work closer at home, and also contribute to the building top-quality facilities for the students and staff of the Board of Burbank Unified. These projects represent an important investment, not only for our schools' future, but also for the hard-working men and women who work and live here in Burbank. Thank you for your time, Board members.
Next, we have Greg Lewis.
Good evening, Dr. Alkakanyan and Board members. My name is Greg Lewis. I'm the Business Manager and 34-year member of Plumbers and Pipe Fitters Local 761 right here in Burbank. I grew up in Burbank. I graduated from Washington Elementary School, John Muir Junior High, and Burbank High School. So, you know, this vote's very important to us. You know, I'm excited for this vote tonight, because every year we go to the Career Days at Burbank and Burrows, and we express, or try to show opportunities, career opportunities for the students that might not want to go to a four-year university. And I think, how cool would it be to have one of those students become the next apprentice, or journeyman, or supervisor, building one of the schools that, that needs the work? So that would just make everything come full circle here. This agreement will provide career opportunities for local residents, and it'll also ensure that taxpayer, that the taxpayers' money is paying for the most skilled and highest-trained workers in the construction industry working on your schools. I'm here in strong support and ask that you move forward with this Community Workforce Agreement with the LA and Orange County Building Trades. Thank you.
Next, we have Manny Nava.
Good evening, Board. My name is Manny, my name is Manny Nava, as stated. I've been in the trade for 20 years. All I can say in these 20 years, I have accomplished a lot of stuff. I graduated from the apprenticeship of Local 105 in 2011. And since the beginning of my career, I've been in many, many projects, many cities. Staying local, it's been one of the blessings of my career. I have had to travel far, but I can really appreciate when I stay local, and I can share that with you guys. Currently, I'm working in the buildup of the Burbank Airport for the company of ACO. And through my career as well, I have worked across the street at the police department. We have been, I have been involved in many, many very big projects. So it's been a blessing to be in this trade, the sheet metal, as a worker with Smart Local 105. Now, I'm going to go ahead and read off the text. I am here to ask you to, to support the Community Workforce Agreement with the LA OC Building Trades. This agreement means local workers like me can stay closer to home, spend more time with our families, and put our skills to work, building the best possible facilities for the students and staff of Burbank Unified. These projects are a chance to invest in both the future of our schools and the workers who live here. Thank you.
Oh, man. Luis Porres? Did I say that right?
You did, sir.
Thank you.
Board members, I want to thank you for your time tonight. I know it's going to be a long evening. But I'm here to support, I'm a member of Local 761 Business Agent, and I'm here to ask for your support in the Community Workforce Agreement. I'm a proud uncle of three nieces that are at Burbank High School right now. And their parents are also teachers in the Burbank Unified School District. So it's an amazing school district. And with that being said, they should be in the safest facilities, in the classrooms, where they're not thinking about the building around them. They know it's safe. They know the water's potable, safe to drink. They know the fire systems are going to work. And they could just focus on learning. So I come to you as a proud uncle and ask for your support for this Community Workforce Agreement with LA Building Trades and OC. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. George Bali? George Bali. Did I say it right?
Yes. Good evening, Honorable Board members. My name is George Bali, and I'm here representing UA Local 761 Plumbers and Pipe Fitters of Burbank, California, and its 1,000-plus members. And I'm here in support of this Community Workforce Agreement. Community Workforce Agreements are important, because they ensure that each person working on these projects are skilled and trained in each of their craft. It also ensures local hiring. It gives local residents an opportunity to join the trade and work on the project in their community. The money that is made from working on these projects is kept circulating in the community, which will benefit the local economy. CWAs also ensure that there are no strikes or lockouts, and that all contractors and subcontractors are bound to the terms of the CWA until the completion of the project. Lastly, projects that are under a CWA agreement are the safest projects to work on. CWAs contain specific provisions that lay out required safety training that improve worker awareness, therefore making the projects a safe place to work. So I'm here tonight to urge you all to please approve this Community Workforce Agreement with the OC, LA OC Building Trades. Thank you for your time.
Next, we have Julie Greer.
So, good evening, BUSD Board members, District Administration and staff. I am Julie Greer, a 39-year resident of the city of Burbank. I'm a graduate of the Burbank Unified School District, having graduated from Thomas Jefferson Elementary School, John Muir Middle School, and Burbank High School, who also spent seven and a half years working as a school counselor in this district before transferring to LAUSD in 2020. I just wanted to say thank you for formally recognizing National Arab American Heritage Month in the Burbank Unified School District for the month of April. As a former student, a former school district employee, and as a current resident of Burbank, who also comes from Syrian, Bolivian, Palestinian descent, it is so important to me and to so many others in this city to be seen, heard, and represented so widely for the first time in history. We have come so far from the days of hiding our identity for fear of being mischaracterized. We have come so far from the days of hiding our identity for fear of being mischaracterized. I truly hope to continue to partner with BUSD to ensure this type of recognition and visibility continues on a yearly basis. Thank you so much.
And our last card is Fernando Ochoa. And if anyone else wants to say something, this is your opportunity.
Good evening, board. My name's Fernando Ochoa, I'm at Smart Local 105, speaking on behalf of over 7,000 sheet metal workers here in the area, as well as also speaking on behalf of the LA OC Building Trades Council, which has over 48 affiliates and over 160,000 workers here in the area. Just like a bunch of our members just said, they take great pride whenever they get to work on a local project in their area. I think especially in our trade, we cover such an expansive area across almost all of Southern California. Some of our members are driving close to four hours sometimes to a job. And so when we have local jobs here in Burbank where they can drive literally four minutes down the street rather than four hours, it's a win, not just for us at the union, but for the members and their families, right? They can get to pick up their kids from school, you know, grab dinner with them, rather than getting off at work at 4:00 and then getting in at 8:00. I know, just speaking for myself, I had a lot of nights like that where I was, you know, I waited for my dad to get home, but he was stuck in traffic, and it was a whole thing, right? So I think it's a, it's a universal thing to not just us in the building and construction trades, but every industry, right? So whenever you can provide those kinds of opportunities for folks, it's great. So I appreciate you guys' consideration and hope you guys approve our Community Workforce Agreement. Thank you. Appreciate it.
With that said, that was the last comment. We're at Item 10B Superintendent Comments, Dr. Paramo.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much. Mr. Gomez Tagli, I appreciate you coming down tonight. I will not be responding as this is a personnel issue and that would be inappropriate, but I do appreciate that you came down and that you voiced your concern. Ms. Greer, it's so good to see you. It's been a little while. And of course, we would be honored to recognize Arab American Heritage Month. It's the right thing to do. We would continue to do that, and I really, really, truly appreciate your advocacy in bringing this forward. So I'm just sorry we didn't do it sooner, and I appreciate you coming out tonight. Elliot, you are such a breath of fresh air. My, my God, there's like this light that, that just comes out of you when you speak. And I feel blessed that our kids get to learn from you in PE at John Muir Middle School. And I guarantee, as long as you're involved and continue to be involved in the Tri-City Track Meet, it will continue to thrive because you bring so much passion to it, and it's so obvious. And I appreciate you doing that and doing that for our kids because, as you stated, it's creating lifelong memories, and I think that's pretty important. So thank you for that. To our two gentlemen here, you can guarantee I will call you. I'm actually feeling so positive today. Ironically, I've had several meetings about the potential for a parcel tax that would generate more funding for our school, which means that it's going to provide a lot more things for kids, and my encounters have been all positive. And so it makes me feel really good because it's important. It's important for our community, and to have young leaders like yourself come forward and offer help is just absolutely amazing, and so I appreciate it. And I do have your cards. I'll keep them in my wallet, and when I'm ready for you, I'm going to call you to the district office, and we can talk about how you can help us. And I appreciate that, and I appreciate the effort. To my brothers and sisters that represent the unions, I'm not, I'm not sure that, maybe I just need to state it emphatically, that this CWA agreement is just important to us as it is to you, and I want to make sure that you know that. My dad was a proud union member. He was a machinist for LA Paperbox in the City of Commerce. He worked there for 35 years. Very proud of my dad, very hard worker. What this means to me and what I know about union workers, they take so much pride in their work, and what that translates to is quality. And if we're going to invest city dollars on our schools for our kids, then I want quality work, work that's going to hold up, right? And that's what this means to me. And I will just say quickly that there are a lot of people on the board and my CBO who have worked really, really, really hard to put all of this together. And so to my fellow board members and to Mr. Andy Cantwell, I'm just grateful that we have been able to reach a point where this is actually agendized and it's on the board agenda, and we will get to that sooner rather than later. I'm gonna, I'm gonna try really hard to not get emotional with the two moms that came up about your concerns with the LGBT community. I feel terrible. If your child was bullied, it's not what we want. It's not what we espouse. Your family is important to us. They're vital members of our community, and as far as I'm concerned, as the superintendent, they will always be welcomed, they will always be loved. We work hard. I try really hard to communicate directly, succinctly, and strongly about our belief that all kids belong here. All kids, every kid. Your kids come to us, whoever they are. I don't choose that. That's not, that's not my job. My job is to make sure that when they're here, that they're cared for, and you can guarantee that that will happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Paramo. Dr. Weisberg.
Thank you. Let's see. Jessica and Meredith, Jessica, we know each other pretty well. I had a chance to run down really quickly and just let Jamie know that we've got her back, no matter what, always. And I know that sometimes as a board, we don't disagree, we don't agree on everything, but this is something that we're unwavering about. Every single student in BUSD deserves to be supported, encouraged, loved, feel safe, feel like they can be their true selves. And I don't think there's anything more important than preserving that for all of our students. So to Jessica and Meredith, any ideas you have for things that we can be doing to deepen that work? Because it's, yeah, it's important that we're up here and we say it, right? I think that's foundationally like the first step. The second step is what can we be doing to reinforce that every day in meaningful ways in the classroom? So I hope you'll continue to let us know when something isn't going right so that we can make it right. And any ideas you have for how we can consistently make real systemic change, I think is important. I think it's going to be a real challenge over the next four years. Not that it wasn't a challenge before, it was, but I know that we may remain 100% committed, however, however that looks to you. So thank you for coming. Ladies, thank you for being brave and getting up here. It's pretty scary. But you set a really good example for your friends and for all the adults, too, that you came up here and you spoke about something you care about even when it was scary. David and Vladimir, awesome. Get ready for us to be hitting you up for all the things. And congratulations on ASB Secretary. That's huge. Sorry, I'm skipping around here. To Elliot, you're the best. There you are, I can see your glasses. It was so much fun to be at the track meet and to cheer everybody on. I can't wait for it for next year. I know we all had a really great time, and thank you for coming and letting us know about it. But it was just such a great day, so many people there, and you could just see how much everybody enjoyed being there and rooting on one another. To Ms. Greer, just to echo what Dr. Paramo said, thank you for bringing this to our attention this year, every year. You don't, I mean, you're always welcome to come back, but you certainly don't need to advocate for it because it's going to live here. To Terry Rubin, Joe, Joaquin, Tim, Desiree, Josh, Andrew, Greg, Manny, Luis, George, and Fernando, thank you for being here. I've been able to interact with a lot of you over the past year. Most of you know this is a hugely important issue to me and something that I've been advocating for, for a long time. For people who don't know, this will be the first time that Burbank Unified has a CWA in the history of the district, which is huge. My grandfather was a member of the Steel Workers Union his whole life. I wish he was here to see this because he would know he did a good job with me in advocating, but I think this really speaks to our commitment of helping our students see that the work we do in the school goes beyond the classroom, and that there are careers and trades and things that you can do that lead to a fulfilling life where you give back to your community, and you can ideally afford to live in that community. Who, somebody said that? Oh, I think Joaquin said it. We know that the big reason why people leave Burbank is because they can't afford to live in Burbank. That is the biggest reason our families are leaving. So if we can get more students to get into these like amazing jobs where they can earn a living wage, then maybe we'll see more people stay or return to Burbank. And so that's a selfish part of the CWA, but it's, it's really true. So there's a million reasons why this is important. Safe working conditions, making sure that the people who are building our schools are paid a fair wage and that they don't have to worry about that. They don't have to worry about the quality of their work sites, and that we don't have to worry about the quality of the work being done. All of this could not be more important. So I'm really, really excited. Thank you to Mr. Cantwell, to Dr. Paramo. I also just want to give a quick shout out to Josh Christensen, to Greg Lewis, and to Eddie Alvarez, who were really instrumental in guiding me through a process I really wanted to happen but didn't know all the time how to navigate it. So you guys, I can't thank you enough for your patience with me, for helping me understand how to do this, and my hope is moving forward that the city will take notice, that other school districts who don't yet have a CWA will take notice, and they'll see how beneficial it is to our community, to our students, and to our physical structures. So thank you guys for taking time out and for being here and for the work that you do.
Board Member Kano.
Okay. So to Jessica and Meredith, basically, I really appreciate the respectful way that you have come and responded to something that was, you know, a very difficult thing to have to deal with, but you've responded just such a very elegant way. I do commend you for that. And just today, in fact, I was telling my students, in fact, it was my gate class, and they're, you know, I tell you, these kids are just love, you know, really, we're looking at grades, and we were talking about something, and I said, you know what? I got to be honest with you, it's grades, you know, we all love grades and we're super competitive. I said, but honestly, somebody, a teacher said something, and I have to say, they called you guys out for kindness. And I said, that, to me, is above, is everything, is kindness. I said, you know, I can't, you know, it's just, it's just at the top of my list. To the two gentlemen from VHS, interesting also, that whole thing, I was, I definitely would like to contact you in the future just because, again, for my students, I've been teaching argumentative essays. And so that idea that an argumentative essay can actually live on and become in action, that's what it's supposed to be about. It's like, ooh, that's very exciting. To, I've got everybody, you know, Mr. Norton, Mr. Mendoza, Mr. Grant, so everybody there, I got everybody's name, but one question I wanted to ask, Ms. Lamb, what was the project that they did that they, oh, I can't, I'm going to ask you in the, we'll talk. I'm just commenting. But the, yeah, in terms of the idea of pride, I know my cousin is a sheet metal worker, and so he put the sheet metal on one of the buildings down here in Burbank, and so he, you know, we always go by and go, oh, yeah, that's Robbie's building, you know? And so again, that idea, that pride, you're saying, that it's, you know, you're building it because you're local, and it's, you can see it, and then everybody looks at it. It's just, it's a win-win situation. So if, and then, Ms. Greer, yes, good, we, yes, good. I'm so glad that we're doing that and that, you know, we're like one of the first, and it's, we all need to feel that. I think I've cut it.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Board Clerk Tabit.
Mrs. Kano, it's difficult sometimes, isn't it, to put your feelings into words when everybody's staring back at you?
She hasn't been here for six months yet, so once she passes.
I have a hard time, and I've been here a lot longer than that. Meredith and, and, sorry, Jessica, thank you. My notes are at the bottom. I know, I just looked at Dr. Paramo because what kind of words can you say where parents teach their children at a young age to hate? And that's, the tears are coming, sorry. That's, that's not, anything I ever thought would, would be something sitting at the, on this dais that I would have to deal with in elementary school. I get as kids get older, they, they learn from home, et cetera, the lessons we don't want them to learn, but for goodness sakes, every child in every school, in every corner of this world should be able to go to school and feel safe with who they are, a child who walks in, and that's it. Anything else? And anything other than absolute kindness and love and support to every child who walks through every door of every school is just unacceptable to me. And I, I, I mean, I don't have an answer. There's, what do you do? And, and it just, I just want you to know, it breaks my heart, and whatever needs to be done, whatever needs to be said, you have my 100% plus support because Mama Bear's not happy. And, and that's never a good thing to, neither's Papa Bear. When a child is hurt, I, so, let's just keep our, our thoughts and prayers on the positive side and hope that there's, look, if one child or one family learned something from your letter tonight, then we're a step ahead, aren't we? And so let's keep that going and keep the positiveness. I really appreciate you coming down and saying the positive words. I think, sorry, I think that was really, really important. So thank you for that. I know it was hard, so you have my respect for your strength and courage to come down and advocate for a wonderful child, and that's what she is. So thank you. Okay, to all the other folks who came down about the Community Workforce Agreement, thank you very much for showing your support, and as Dr. Paramo said, you have our support because, yes, that's what we want. We want well-made structures created in a safe, clean environment. And I know with union workers, you've been trained to work, someone said it, you said it perfectly, that safety is a number one priority. I, I talked about job management the other day in a meeting, and not only what you're building, but how you go about building it is vital to what you do. Keeping areas blocked off from the general population of walking by, keeping your, your work areas clean so that accidents don't happen to you and anyone else coming by. So I appreciate that, and I know that with this agreement, that's, it's not even a promise, it's just what is because that's how you were trained, and I appreciate that. So thank you for coming out. You definitely have my support in that. Ms. Greer, thank you for coming out and supporting the Arab American community, of which my family is a part of, and the one side. We appreciate that. And it's about time that we had a little recognition as well. Appreciate it. Did I miss anyone? Elliot, you're awesome guy. Thank you. And I, I think I, yeah, I think I hit everybody that I needed to be hit. If I didn't, thank you for coming down and speaking up. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you, Board Clerk Tabit. Vice President Ponser Kamkar.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. It is so exciting to see a full room, and I know as soon as we pass your item, you're going to leave, and you should. But I just want to say thank you to all of our electricians and sheet metal
to say thank you to all of our electricians and sheet metal workers and carpenters and plumbers and pipe fitters that came out tonight. I've gotten to know Josh and Desiree and Eddie a little bit over the last year or so, as we started to talk about this. And, you know, I think when we put on the agenda a couple of months ago that we wanted to go in this direction, I mentioned that I didn't really understand why we would need something like this. And I have been, I wasn't against it, I just didn't, I needed to be educated, frankly. And I was so excited to see this come through in a way that I think is really authentic to the wishes of our community, right? This is the first time that we're doing this, but I, I really think we're doing it right, which is really exciting. I was really excited to see that we are prioritizing Burbank and boroughs and Monterey grads, that that's the first priority, is so exciting. That it's going to be people who live in our community and live near our community that can come here. And so, you know, as I think Dr. Weisberg and Ms. Tabet said, you know, we, we want you to be able to live here on, on the wages, and we want you to be able to work here. One thing that I would be remiss if I didn't say is, if you are working here and you don't yet live here, if you work here for 10 hours or more a week, you can send your students to Burbank Unified Schools. So for those of you that are, for those of you who are working on the airport right now, make sure to tell a friend to tell a friend. Because, you know, it's a great, it's a great thing that a lot of folks don't know about. But we're so excited for this work to get started. I'm so excited to see the amazing work that's going to be done and to know that all of our kids and my kids are safe at school and that they're going to be going to modern facilities with roofs that don't leak and AC that works and all of these, all of these great things that I think people can take it, take for granted. I do want to just give a big thank you to Dr. Weisberg for being the driving force behind this. I don't know that we would have gotten this far, or gotten this far this soon without her advocacy for Community Workforce Agreement. And I want to thank Mr. Cantwell for making sure that it really matched up to what we asked for and coming to the negotiating table, I think really authentically, to say, you know, this is what, what is going to work in Burbank and what we, what we want to see happen with our facilities. So thank you to both of you, and thank you to you all for coming and advocating for this. David and Vladimir, I will be getting in touch. I'm so excited that you came. There's so much you could be doing with your time and you're choosing to do this. There's a lot going on in the world that needs help. But I'm real glad to have you on our side as we consider what we need to do for funding. So thank you, and I'm just really proud to have you guys as, as Burbank students. Elliot, the track meet was amazing. It was unbelievable. My kids loved it. I loved it. There were kids running like five-minute miles. It was unbelievable. These kids were so smoking fast. And so, you know, just thank you for advocating for it and making sure that it happens. It was really cool, and I hope that it will happen every year from here on out. It was just, oh, there you are. It was great.
I wanted to point out that you guys were there too, but the alarm sounded.
It's okay, it's okay. Dr. Weisberg was there, I was there, Dr. Aggani was there. Were you there too?
Yeah.
Wow, party on. We had a great time. And, you know, we're, we're a rock star. You're a rock star, and we're lucky to have you. That's what that was going to be. Ms. Greer, thank you for making sure this happened. It's almost kind of embarrassing that it hadn't happened before this year. I'm excited to see the books that our library technicians have recommended and to see this happening on DEI boards in our, in our schools and see what our schools do with this. Maybe not this year, it might be, it might be tight for this year, but, you know, this is how we're going to set it for next year. So now it's, now it's on the calendar. And so Jessica and Meredith and the Neal family, thank you so much for coming out and for advocating for your kids and for all kids who need to feel belonging in our schools. Thank you for coming with really tangible ideas. I think they're all really great ideas and should not just be implemented at Jefferson, but potentially at other schools, too. This is not, this is not just an issue at Jefferson. There have been many, many a paper written on social emotional skills and how we're still working on that and how, what bullying looks like, but this, this is a start, I think. It's a really good start. We're just, yeah, I, I want to make sure that all of our schools are welcoming for all of our students. And, and kids, like, it's awesome that you came up to support this. We're so proud of you, and we're so proud to have you in our schools, okay? And we got you. Thanks.
Thank you, Vice President Kamkar. I'm going to go in order. I'm going to start with David and Vladimir. So thank you for, you know, offering your services, but also thank you for all you do. I'm very interested to learn more about the organization, but the fact that you're here, you and millions of viewers here tonight watching us, I always say that, by the way. It speaks volumes. So keep up the volunteer spirit, and yes, you will hear from us. So thank you very much, and thank you for all you do. Mr. Elliot Cho, thank you very much for wonderful, every time I see Elliot, I want to go run a track, you know, and just go a couple of runs, you know. It's just energy, and it was a wonderful event, and I know my colleagues were there. I think Vice President Ponser Kamkar's daughter broke a couple of hundred-meter dash records that night, you know. Well, don't say that. Thank you. Sorry. I was spoiling them with candy, I just, but, but I just love, you know, what we saw that night. It was just wonderful. And thank you for recognizing our friends. And, you know, again, I was cheering for everyone, but again, also, you know, I was being a little biased because our kid goes to Mir, so, you know. But it was just wonderful to see the, the community come together, all the posters, all the members who came. And it was a couple of hours event. It wasn't like, it was pretty long, yeah. Yeah. So thank you, and, and let's even make it bigger next year. How's that? So. To my dear friend Julie Greer and all of your friends, we can stand up just to see who, I want to see, yeah, one, we have your friends who've been advocating. Yes, yes, thank you. Just stand up. Let's, let's have a round of applause for them. Mubarak and chokra. Thank you. And this is very important. I'm glad that, you know, we're doing this. I know we've been talking about this, we've been advocating, and here we are tonight. So congratulations. It is a historic moment, and we should celebrate it. So thank you very much again.
Thank you.
Thank you. So to all of my sisters and brothers here tonight, first of all, if it is okay with you, I want all of the union representatives, you can stand up just for everyone to give you a round of applause for all you do. Hold on, I'm going to take a picture. Hold on. Thank you. This is history in making. I know we've talked about this over years, and I'm glad that here we are today talking about this wonderful contract. As a union member myself, I can tell you how important it is. Not only good-paying jobs, but also doing the job right. Make, safety was brought up, but also, you know, training a lot of individuals who, you know, this is something that, you know, has built their futures. Middle class, someone said, this is a ticket to middle class. And more than ever now, we need that right now. So I want to thank all of you again for all you do and all your hard work. But also, you know, if anyone ever asks questions, you know, as my dear friend, Mr. Ochoa, said, less traveling, that means less traffic, less pollution, right? Of course, better-paying jobs, too. But anyone ever disagrees, just bring in the traffic and pollution factor. I think that will help us as well. But again, thank you for being here tonight, because I know how busy you are, I know how hard you work. And we need, you know, more than ever to have these local jobs. More than ever, we also want to make sure that, you know, things are done properly. So I am very certain that it will be. But again, from the bottom of my heart, thank you very much, and thank you for all you do. Last but not least, Ms. Stamen and Ms. Meredith and all the kiddos who are here, and yes, you are very brave to be here tonight. This is very personal to me, and I'll tell you why. Those of you who know me and my neighborhood, I always have that sign in front of my house. One long sign, campaign signs come and go, but I have the one that says, from the Burbank Human Relations Council, that says, hate has no home here. It's always there. And I know my colleagues, I know, we've talked about this in the past, I know we got a little emotional, but I can tell you right now, this board and this district, there is, hate has no home in Burbank Unified School District. Let me repeat myself. Hate has no home in Burbank Unified School District. And for the kiddos, I can tell you, personal experience, I was bullied, I was made fun of when I was in refugee camps when I left my country. When I came here, and this was when I was 14 and 15, I was made fun of because of where I'm from, I was made fun of because of my ethnicity, I was made fun of because of my religion, or even my last name, you know. I didn't stop when I came here. And I can tell you, it's difficult. But I'll tell you another thing. No one would have imagined someone from Middle East who's Armenian with a lengthy last name, I get it wrong sometimes myself. What, thank you. By the way, everyone pronounced it correctly, so thank you very much, everyone. But who would have, I would have, and no one would have imagined that someone who came here didn't speak, I came here when I was 18, you know, I didn't speak a lick of English. But you know what? I stood my ground, I studied very hard, and here I am today, President of Burbank Board of Education. So don't ever listen to all the people out there criticizing you. Focus on who you are. But most important, also remember, you have the best, best supporters out there, and that's your family, your parents. No matter how bad it goes, it's all your family will be there, and we are part of your family. So thank you for all you do, and thank you, everyone, for being here tonight. All right.
Dr. Aggani.
Yes.
Would you consider moving 12F before 11A, please?
Certainly. Is that okay with my colleagues? All right. So we're moving 12F and jumping 11A. So we're going to do 12 first, new and unfinished business, 12F. Give me one second. Approval of the Community Workforce Agreement. Mr. Cantwell.
Board members, this evening, you've already heard quite a bit, and I've had the opportunity to speak to it, so I will have my comments brief. November 5th, we asked this community to support Measure ABC, a generational investment in the facilities in our schools. The community overwhelmingly did support it, a $458 million investment that will be spent over the next eight to 10 years to improve our schools. With some additional funding sources from the state and elsewhere, the total investment in school facilities will exceed half a billion dollars here in Burbank. We take great pride and joy, as well as responsibility, that the community made that commitment and investment. One thing that Dr. Paramo and I heard throughout the year leading up to the election, when we spoke to the community, was a number of themes that really coalesced around two really important ones. One was either concerns over the way some of the projects have been completed in the past, or feedback around quality. You know, it's been frustrating that in the past six months, I've had to come to you twice. One was the Burbank High Pool, where we talked about conduit that was not laid properly, in fact, was actually a great danger as we were doing demo on the pool. We also talked about the pool, the roofing projects and the storm, and how, again, the roofs had come down, were not properly installed. And so we heard that theme throughout 2024, that we want to make sure that this investment, that stewarding these dollars well includes ensuring that the work is done correctly the first time, that we don't have to clean up messes only five or 10 years later. And so quality labor committed to these projects is what stewardship looks like. The other thing that we heard was, again, a great commitment to our local schools, but a commitment to this community. And so they wanted to see these dollars stay local. And so it was, again, November 5th that this community overwhelmingly passed Measure ABC. It was on January 16th where this board gave direction to Dr. Paramo and I to negotiate with the LA and Orange County Building and Trades. You know, negotiation, there's kind of two overarching styles of negotiation. One is transactional, you know, think purchasing a car. I want something, you have it, and we're haggling over who gets a bigger piece of the pie. Who's going to, am I going to buy it for less, or are you going to get more? The other style of negotiations, relational. It's understanding that this is not a one-time act, and it's also not about a fixed pie. It's when interests are able to align, we're able to actually get better outcomes for both parties. And we're able to understand that this is not, again, only about 2025, but it's about a long-term commitment to the parties. And so it was with a great joy that over the past few months, I was able to work with the LA and Orange County Building and Construction Trades Council to bring forward to you this recommendation. It is with Dr. Paramo's and my full recommendation and endorsement that you approve tonight the Community Workforce Agreement.
All right. Can I get in motion? Dr. Weisberg?
I move that we approve the Community Workforce Agreement as presented.
Okay. It's been moved by Dr. Weisberg and seconded by Vice President Ponser Kamkar. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Thank you. Now you can go home. Go enjoy your evening. Thank you.
Take care. Thank you.
Thank you for coming on.
Thank you.
So now we're going back to 11. Reports to the board.
Thank you.
Thank you. Report on the 2024 California Dashboard Measure for High Schools. If you can have Mr. John, and John Paramo and Oscar, Mr. Macias, come to the podium. Or there's someone else you're going to introduce. Are we good?
We are going to have Dr. Anders present today.
Oh, oh, there you are. How are you, doctor?
I'm good.
Not yet. Yeah, sorry. Good evening.
Good evening. It's, it's, I guess, timely that I'm talking about college and career readiness when we had so many tradespeople here representing our community. And that's what we're here to talk about with this report. This is something that we talked, we had a board report in the fall predicting some of, some of where these numbers would be for last spring. And so the final, the numbers are in on the California Dashboard. This is an item that's been top of mind for our district leadership and something that's a topic of conversation with our site leaders throughout the year as well. So want to make sure that we highlight where we're at and, and be transparent as far as what our goals are and where we are currently. So those not familiar with the College and Career Indicators, it is a indicator on our California Dashboard that's used to look at the performance of our schools, specifically our high schools, in preparing students for their pathway post-graduation. There's very specific measures that they look at for this indicator. Those would be CTE pathway completion, being proficient on a smarter balanced assessment in 11th grade, college credit course completion, it's actually two, at least two semesters of a, of college credit coursework, advanced placement, three or better on advanced placement tests, and meeting the A through G requirements, or there's being CSU/UC eligible. These other indicators are ones that are not as, they're not currently utilized in Burbank Unified, but these are ones that we've been exploring and discussing and investigating over the past couple of weeks. Our current College and Career Indicator, we are yellow, we're at 50%. This is very consistent with where we were last year. During the pandemic, some of the rules around the indicator were adjusted. And so post-pandemic, our numbers look like this, and we And we've been able to maintain, in fact, grow just a little bit where we are as far as that indicator. You can see that 50% of our students are identified as prepared. Breaking that down a little further, you can see last year, we were at 49.6 and this year at 50.6. I can see that our, the number of students actually increased slightly from last year as well as far as our total graduating class. And these are our most common areas where we qualify students. The number is representation of how many students met that criteria. And the percentage is of the, of the students who were identified as prepared, the percentage that met that criteria as well. So you can see the majority of our students are, that are college career prepared are meeting the A through G requirements, both last year and this year. And the biggest area where we've seen a slight decline is in CTE pathway completers. But you can also see that our college credit coursework has increased, and we anticipate that continuing to increase going forward as well. CTE pathway specifically is something that we've been adjusting, or there's been some adjustments to some of those pathways. But it's also something that we're monitoring as a lot of our pathways are sometimes three or four-year pathways to completion. And so we're looking at creating some additional pathways that are only two or three-year pathways to completion to see kids through and have more completion through that. Advanced placement, those numbers are going up. We were just meeting with our high school administrators this morning and talking about the need for tables and chairs because we have so many students that are taking advanced placement courses, which is great. That's a great problem to have. And we are seeing the indication that those numbers are already going to increase again for next year. It's, it's part of our local indicators to make sure we're providing open access to all students, and we are definitely doing that within Burbank Unified School District. Smarter Balanced has been a topic this month for all of our sites. We're just, we're just wrapping up assessments at our high schools, middle schools, probably still doing a few makeups currently, and then our elementary schools are just getting started with smarter balanced assessments. These are specifically in 11th grade students, which is sometimes a difficult motivating, it's difficult to motivate students to perform their best on this assessment because they have a lot of other pressing priorities going into the end of their 11th grade career with AP classes, for example. So we've been monitoring that closely and working with our sites and happy with the percentage of students that are completing that. Especially, I want to shout out to ILA, which it's been a challenge to get students to, that are in the Independent Learning Academy, that are at home doing independent study, to come in and take this assessment, and they've done an outstanding job getting those students to come in, mostly the work of Tracy Shaw, who we just talked to earlier tonight, who will now be the principal at Disney, so congrats to them.
Just a couple clarifying questions on this. For Smarter Balanced, is it both the ELA and math? And it's just getting a, essentially a meets or exceeds on both of those?
Yep, that's correct.
And then tell me again what the percentage is next to each of the bullets. So what is the 79.5% for A to G completion, for example, last year?
So of the students that were identified as college career ready, 79% of those students met through that requirement.
Got it. So of the 50%,
Yes.
80% of them were A to G.
80% of 50%.
Thank you.
Yep. I'll, I will talk about A through G across all students.
I just want to make sure.
Yep, nope.
College credit courses. Those are classes that are dual, what is it?
Dual enrollment.
Dual enrolled. But we also have CTE classes that you could also dual enroll, sort of, but not exactly, right? So that career pathway completers is not the ones that are signed up for getting college credit as well.
There are, so the,
Yeah, it could be both, right?
Those students are getting college credit because they're taking a course through LA Valley College or GCC. But there are some of those courses that are dual credit that are also a completer course for our, one of our CTE pathways. Is that?
Yes.
It could be either or.
It could, it could be either or, so, okay, so.
I, I think the challenging part with that is when you set a pathway, it could mean that you are taking a required course in ninth grade, a required course in 10th grade, a required course in 11th grade in order to complete the pathway, right? And so you might, you might start off really ambitious, and you do it your freshman year, and you take the required one your sophomore year, but all of a sudden, you decide, I don't want to do the other one in, in 11th grade year because I'd rather take photography. And so you didn't complete that, that pathway.
Dr. Weisberg.
Just a clarifying question, because I think for people who aren't super familiar with all of this, it's a little confusing. So we have very high graduation rates, right, in the 95, 96 percentile, which looks great. But for somebody who's looking at that, and then looking at college and career ready, and then looking at A through G, can you talk a little bit about the differences between those? And why our graduation rate is so high, but we have what looks to be substantially lower college and career readiness percentage?
Yeah, I want to speak specifically about career readiness because I'm going to talk about A through G in slides going forward. But career ready specifically, it's the two indicators there. So the college ready would be the A through G or college credit course or advanced placement. The CTE and Smarter Balanced, usually those are the more career focused. We've been talking about, we have programs that do apprenticeships. We have programs that do course-based, work-based learning experiences. It's only a small number of our students that would qualify for this metric, though, so they don't really contribute towards that overall number. Or we would have to change our programs in order for them to be counted as career ready through this indicator. So to your point, we have a very high graduation rate. Doesn't mean our students are not ready to go into a career. We just haven't necessarily identified a specific metric that the state is looking at for this measure in order for them to be identified as career ready, if that makes sense.
I would also imagine that for some of these things, those students are captured as college and career ready under something else, right? So my guess is that any student that qualifies under AP is potentially also qualifying under A to G, right? Because they're already taking court. I would think that anyone who's getting the state seal of belligerency because they are going all the way through probably on the dual immersion program is probably doing A to G as well. Maybe, maybe not. But is that, is that kind of right? Is it kind of like, a lot of the academic ones are probably captured under A through G, and then the, the career readiness ones are a little bit separate and changing how we reach the eventual indicator?
A lot of the, a lot of the career ones are creating a program specific to meet the, the criteria that they're looking for, for this indicator.
Got it, got it, got it.
And so what we were saying about our CTE pathways, three or four years, some kids don't finish that pathway to be identified as completer, but that pathway that we have, because it is a four-year pathway, is very robust, and those kids that do complete are very prepared for, to go basically straight into an industry. If they, even if they didn't complete, they're still more prepared to take a class in community college to finish and, and jump right into a career.
We're, we're trying to fit into their, the state's mold, and it doesn't always work that way.
I have a question before. Okay, you go first, then I go after it. Doc, Clark Tabit.
You know, in, in the last election cycle, Dr. Aga Khan reminded me there are some people who bring up these totals and numbers, and they don't really mean any. I mean, you're right, you said it perfectly, Dr. Paramo. We're trying to fit the mold that the state says. But that other 50% may, if they choose to go to college, may have no problem getting through it. And, and maybe even better than some of the ones we thought would be prepared. You, you just don't know, and a lot of it depends on where they go to college and what they do. I just wanted to say that on your behalf, that there's, there's some great guidelines, and I appreciate all the work you've done, but.
Really, what this indicator is sort of doing is, is a student ready to go straight into a CSU UC or straight into a career? And we have lots of students that are going to a two-year community college, and they're entirely prepared to do that. Yeah.
Well, Dr. Anders, if I may, and I think, I'm glad you clarified that because, again, also what we had heard in the past was that our teachers are not doing their job preparing. And, and just for correction, yes, which is wrong. But also, the state itself, it changes criteria. Like, was it during the pandemic, they loosened up the criteria? Some schools don't even care anymore if you take SAT. That doesn't matter anymore, right? It keeps changing, right?
It's been the last two years where it's starting to look the same. But for a while, especially right after the pandemic, this was a moving target, and it was changing. And so it's really hard to look at longitudinal data because it doesn't make any sense. You can't, I can't compare where we are now to four years ago or three years ago because what the criteria they were using was different. So I feel like over the last couple of years, we're starting to establish a baseline for what this work is. I also want to point out that a lot of our kids could be qualified to go to a UC school or a CSU school, and they have the option to do that, but may simply choose for financial reasons and other reasons that they're going to go to community college first and then transfer over, which is becoming a more attractive pathway for some of our kids. So, you know, we have to take that into consideration as well.
And I think, I think also we should take into consideration, I agree with you, the, a lot of colleges are free now, especially the first two years. But now, so you've seen all these changes, the grants going away. I mean, you, you see the cost is going up now, right? So I'm, I'm gonna expect to see even more students going to college first and then kind of switching. But just for clarification also, this data you're getting, the student has to volun, they have to, right? I mean, where are you finding this stuff? Because you don't know this about every student, right?
It's, it's in our data that we're able to push up to the state, to CalPads.
You're thinking, I think, of the clearinghouse data where we get where they go to college, but this is all from work they've done in high school.
Yep, that's correct.
Which, again, that, but there's also, again, as you said before, now, some students, like, when I was in high school, I didn't, I was like, I went to college afterwards, but was I prepared? Yes, but I didn't talk to someone about, or I did, took some courses, but it didn't. Especially for newcomer students, like, you take a couple of classes because you knew here, maybe you take one or two years because that's when you graduate. Like, I went to high school like one year and two months. But it wasn't enough for the indicators to figure out that I was gonna go to college afterwards, right? Because I was not going to the process itself. So I think there is that little percentage also of, you said it, nobody cared then, I guess, yes, but, yes, Ms. Campcar and then Dr. Weisberg.
I mean, you know, I think it's good to look at these numbers, right? One, because they're public, right? And this is what, when people are researching Burbank Unified, they're going to see it and they're going to ask questions, right? So it's important that we talk about them. I also think that for almost each of these, the superintendent and staff have a specific goal that they're looking for, right? They're looking for a different A to G number. They're looking for increasing college credit courses and CTE pathways. We've talked about AP access, we've talked about our Smarter Balanced goals, right? And so when we get to A through G, I think that was the specific goal that, that Dr. Paramo, that we had talked about for him. So they're not, I want to push back a little bit on the idea that this is kind of like a meaningless metric. One, because it's public and from public information, and two, because like, this is something that we are working on. Because we, you know, even if it's 100% fine that our students are choosing potentially different options after high school, this is still something that I think the general public looks at as a measure of quality for our schools. And we can, we can fight that fight all the time, and we can improve the numbers. Because I do think improving these numbers actually improves outcomes for kids, too.
I could see improving the numbers, but I don't think that this is our end-all be-all for our success at ra, ratings. And I think that if, I mean, it's almost criminal, in a way, to peg these kids into a hole based on the state's criteria when there could be a child that, that could be very successful for whatever reason at, at the next level. And I'm not, I'm advocating for whatever they choose to do. I don't want to peg a kid and say, well, this is what the data says, so, you know, you can't choose this pathway, you only get to do those pathways. I think that's what I'm trying to say. I don't want it to be the end-all be-all. That's.
Okay, I,
I'm sorry.
No, no, go, go.
No, no, Dr. Weisberg, you go next, and then Ms. Khan.
Go, go. Ms. Ponsor Campcar sort of beat me to the first chunk of what I was going to say, so thank you, as always. I think the reason I was asking the clarifying questions to Dr. Anders, I think, I don't think anybody here is saying this is the only metric we should measure our success by, but I do think having a better understanding of what they mean is really helpful. So when we look at graduation rates, that's different than A through G completion, even though it sounds like the way that the state is figuring out college readiness is if you're ready for a UC or a Cal State. So it's, I think this is an area where we can, obviously, when, when people are looking at the state-level results, we can't do anything about that. But I think it's important, just sort of community education-wise, that when we do talk about these numbers, that we can help people better understand what, what they mean. So this is, this is, I mean, because I think, Dr. Anders, you always do a really good job of distilling it down in a way that I think people can understand, you know? But, so I think that's something that makes me think it's something we can do a better job of when we're communicating with our parents and students, which is, this is what this means. And this is what this means, and I just think that, that is an important component. And I think that will only serve to help us, you know, improve, right? So that, that was all I wanted to say, which is, because I do think we have to be careful to, to get into a position where we're trying to be defensive about these numbers because there's room for growth, and our learning goals are, are really tied to all of these things, and should, and should be. Not the percentages, but the end goal. Is that my car?
I don't know, that, something is beep-ing in the background, getting me all nervous, but. Ms. Khan.
Oh, Dr. Anders, like, three questions. Number one was, how do we look compared to similar schools? Do they do that? I mean, that's, I have, I have some problems with the,
You've got a district comparison, didn't you do a district?
I mean, not school, like, the other districts. So in terms of, does that, can we do that with the dashboard?
I can do that, I don't have that tonight.
Oh, I'm just saying, I wonder how.
Yeah.
You know, with similar districts, I'd be curious to know how. And then the other question I had was with, with the AP classes. So there's those, the two things, you take the class and you get the grade for that, and then you also have to go and pay for the, take the test to get the. So we're looking at those, does that mean just taking the class and passing the class or actually taking the advanced placement test?
Advanced placement test, is my understanding.
Okay, got it. Okay.
Like free or better?
Yep.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
And I know we're gonna talk about English learners, right?
Yeah.
I know you're going there, but also just for clarification, too, we don't qualify with some of the programs out there for college preparedness because of income concerns, right? There are programs out there that, that partner, and, but they're mostly targeted for low-income families and communities. Correct me if I'm wrong, but.
There are some programs out there that you need to meet a specific criteria, and we don't always meet that because of our percentage of free and reduced lunch.
Got it, thank you.
Yeah, so this is one metric of many, so keep that in mind. It is an area that we have been discussing, and when, it's part of the reason it's being presented tonight is it's an area of focus for us. What we don't want to do is compromise the integrity of any of our programming to meet the state's identified criteria. But also, we don't want to close in opportunities for kids, make sure that they have all the opportunities they have to, to pursue their post-secondary dreams. This is our A through G rate, so I skipped over that slide quick, but now we're looking at A through G rate at our two comprehensive high schools. And our district percentage, you see the district percentage drops a little bit because that includes Monterey population, that, that coursework at Monterey is not A through G. Our Independent Learning Academy has a small graduating class, but they, that coursework is A through G, so those completers, as long as they've taken the correct coursework, do. But the bulk of our, the vast majority of our kids, and the percentage of kids prepared do come from our two comprehensive high schools. And you can see the breakdown of those from last year and historically. I do believe Burbank High specifically, we could, that, that is a little bit of a misrepresentation of what their pop, their actual A through G population is. We're working on some, making sure the reporting is going, is accurately measuring what our, our graduating class actually has completed.
Can you explain the district percentage for us? Is that simply? Can you explain the district percentage for us? Is that simply taking the two schools and averaging them?
So the two high schools there are their own independent percentages. The district percentage is every graduating senior across all district schools.
Got it. So that's not just including Burrows and Burbank High, because we, when you look at it, it seems like there's a discrepancy. So the district percentage is also including ILA, it's including Monterey, got it.
Got it, got it, got it.
Correct.
Uh, I I want to uh, just point out that um, sometimes uh, an unintended consequence of what seems to be constant turnover with new administrators, uh, i- is a real factor, and it plays into a lot of this. Um, when I was API, I was API for six years while I was waiting for a principalship to open. And so being in that position for six years, I learned what to to do and what to expect. And I had a certain cadence uh, for things that I needed to get done. We don't have administrators, especially assistant principals, that are necessarily in the same position year after year. They often move very quickly. Uh, they're in one a position for a year, they go to the next one, or maybe two years, and they go to the next one, right? So uh, we did, we do have a lot of new APs, and the the discrepancy between uh, Burrows and Burbank High looks pretty significant. But it's not because the kids aren't qualified. It really is uh, being able to clean up the data to make sure that we're accounting for the kids that really do qualify, but we missed it. And we missed it because the the database doesn't always catch everything. And so you have to sometimes manually override for kids who really have met the qualification, and we have to manually do that. And it's a lot of work. And usually that happens right when school ends. So graduation happens that Thursday or Friday, and the next week, counselors and APs are reconciling this data and going through each student and making sure that they, the ones that weren't qualified, were actually uh, not qualified, or we manually override.
I I give you an example that adds clarity to this. As a student, let's say, takes algebra in eighth grade, as as an accelerated math student, and somehow that gets missed by the database to say that they actually met that requirement because they took it in middle school, not in high school. So this is part of the conversation we were talking about. Um, and it makes more sense if if I uh, just quickly show an amazing graduation rate for our district. Um, this to your question, Ms. Kamno, about um, how we compare to other districts, this is, we far uh, exceed other districts in 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 our graduation percentage. Uh, and it's a really kind of crown jewel for for our district that we always turn over such a high graduation rate. Um, but that's, but that, yep. But that's a, that's a big part of the conversation is 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 A through G rate varies, the graduation requirements aren't the same across all districts, whereas the A through G rate is the the same for all students and the be eligible for CSU UC. Also, you say some districts will have a higher A through G rate just because they're more aligned or not aligned to to those A through G requirements. So something we have to consider and and think about, um, preparing all of our students uh, through graduation, um, and that percentage of of those that meet the A through G requirement.
Um, can, I think this is germane to this discussion. Um, why don't we do three years of math? And what is the process for, like, to just for looking at that? I mean, I, granted, I grew up in another state, but we had to take math every year, not just like three years or even two years. Like, two years is a little wild to me. Like, my kids will be taking four years of math. I'll tell you that much. Whether or not they want to, I'll be that mom at registration day. Um, so talk to me a little bit about like, what's the historical reason for that? And what can I do to change it?
Yeah, I I understand that uh, entirely. And I did four years of math as well. Uh, didn't like math, but I did well in it. And I had to take four years because it was not an option. I just had to do it. Uh, the state requirement is two years. And in Burbank, we have maintained the state requirement as opposed to um, moving our graduation requirements to be more in line with a college diploma or A through G track. So the the challenge really for me isn't that we are, that we change the rule and make more make math required, make more years of math required. It it's really um, trying to provide a variety of courses in which our subgroups will be able to handle that as a requirement. So if we don't have other options, then what we could see is if we're making it a graduation requirement, that a special ed student uh, may not meet the diploma requirement because they can't pass that third year in math. And then you see that 96% go down uh, because we're not getting all kids across. That doesn't, that, it just means that we have to um, rise up to that challenge. It means we have to add alternative courses, but it's definitely something we can do. Uh, other schools have made uh, world language a diploma requirement so that it's in line with uh, college-going culture. Um, that again, has some unintended consequences with it as well that we would have to talk about. Uh, a lot of schools have um, played the odds, for lack of a better word, they're they're uh, using probability. And they're saying, if we make the diploma requirement one year of world language, then what they're gambling on is that all these kids who passed their first year will go ahead and take the second year because they passed the first one. So I might as well just go ahead and take it and be college-ready. Uh, and it's, the data seems to be good. So that's another um, another technique that people are using uh, to try to get kids to do the right courses. I will tell you this, I will tell you this. Uh, and I'm thinking of a one teacher in particular, that every year for about five years would come into my office when I was at Burrows, and we would track the data, which is really hard to do because they had to do it manually. But a lot of our kids, even though it's two years of math and two years of science, are doing three or more years automatically. So that percentage is actually really high, which to me is kind of arguing the point that why don't we just make it a graduation requirement? So just throwing it out.
Board member Kamno, then Dr. Weisberg.
Well, just actually, um, Dr. Pramo, you were saying, I was thinking the same thing, though, that I know in Montebello, they have, they do the A through G requirement as that's how the they're they go. But we have a much lower graduation rate. I mean, there's a lot of other variables that are in Montebello. But, you know, I think that's something to be reckoned with in terms of, so have we ever thought in terms of maybe just not going through exactly with the A through G following it, but maybe some of those looking at that data and saying, okay, so if we do have that, maybe like world language, we go to two years and not just one. Um, and the other deal is that the issue with the math, that that's what they have there is the three. And then you have to have so many extra other math classes because we, it's really hard to get the kids then to pass all three years. So I mean, it just comes with its own set of problems.
I would, I would be totally open to this discussion. There could be uh, special carve-outs for our subgroups and say the standard is, for example, three years of math instead of just two years of math, uh, with some exceptions with kids that are in special education, for example. And that's also something that could be addressed through the IEP process as well.
Dr. Weisberg.
Yeah, I mean, I think this, it clearly begs the question, when was the last time we kind of sat down and and talked through our graduation requirements?
I can tell you.
Tell me.
It was the first year we did L cap. And we did that in the Mure Art, Mure Auditorium, and we totally dissected this.
Okay.
But that's been a long time ago. That's.
It time. So.
It's time.
Yeah. So I I think very clearly, we need to sit down and have a conversation about why and what's next. Um, and I I would also say that as part of that, when we get nearer to that conversation, which I would love to have sooner rather than later, um, what are other districts doing? Because we can't be the only district who has, we we know we're not, who has subgroups, right? So how are we, how are other districts uh, creating an equitable playing field for their different student populations? Somebody's got to be doing it well. Um, so I I think this is very, this is a clear sort of signal to me that, and it certainly seems like many of us are aligned, like we we should go back and look at this.
Yeah, just for context, there were a slew of other things back then when we looked at it that we weren't doing.
Sure.
That we implemented, that now 10 years later have produced abundance of fruit, right? So we made the critical adjustments that we could at that time. But the point is well taken. It's time to go back and look to make another set of critical adjustments to continue to get this ratcheted up.
So Dr. Pramo, uh, I'm sorry, Doc, it's a burnout problem. What what is it, you know, what it takes to go back and visit and re, I mean, what are we looking at? Because again, staff and time.
Yeah, in terms of uh, process, it would be, uh, I think you've already done it. You've just asked staff to look at this. And so uh, staff will take a look at this. We'll work with our stakeholder groups, uh, which would include our teachers and the teachers' union, talk about what we think are changes we could make, and then we bring forward a recommendation. I I will just say, given that uh, this is the end of the year, this is probably something we should work on and make a recommendation, um, that probably in the spring of next year so that we can make those adjustments for the following school year.
Thank you. Uh, Clerk Tabit.
It would be nice to know the data on, we require two years, how many kids, what percentage of kids are taking the third year? What, how many percentage are taking a fourth year? Because I think that would kind of help us figure out where we're going from there if we had that data.
Just based on the fact that we did, we've done this in the past, we've actually done it consecutively, uh, a few years at a time. We ha- we haven't done it in a little while. But I think uh, you will be pleasantly surprised that this is happening on the natural anyway, uh, which again, makes me feel like that maybe it's time that we just declare it and say this is what the graduation requirement is. So we'll, we'll pull that data and we'll take a look at it.
So we're looking at spring of 2026.
And I think we have to look at our cohort, too, of students coming in and those that have already been in the system to finish out.
It looks like Board Member Kamno and Dr. Weisberg are volunteering to.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
This, this is, I mean, we, we've uh.
Sorry.
I don't know the exact words. But we have our, our sixth graders that. When they leave fifth grade, come into sixth grade math or the higher, I don't like that word, the more advanced, accelerated, that's the right word. Thank you. Accelerated math in sixth grade, and that bumps them up even further. So they, they really do need that opportunity. But and if we're pushing that and growing that, it only makes sense, I think, that we look at how many kids we have. Oh, yeah, you're right. Okay.
Okay, where are we on the slide?
Okay, so our graduation rate, uh, district-wise, 96.3% is the published graduation rate on the California dashboard. And you can see our two high schools, um, and our historic rates. Um, you can see, uh, not just our two high schools, excuse me, all all of our high schools and their graduation rate. So, uh, again, want to recognize Monterey for a 97% graduation rate, which is outstanding for a continuation school.
Dr. Andrews, what subgroup is in orange there? Do you recall? I can also look at the dashboard myself.
Uh, I believe it's English learners.
Okay, even even though they're green below that, or is that a separate?
No, 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 no. Yeah, not, uh, I couldn't tell.
Okay, no worries. I'll look.
Speaking of English learners, uh, yeah, I was wrong. Uh, I wanted to point out that our English learners are green, which is also is an astound astounding feat. Um, so we're blue as a district, which is the highest color rating you can have when it comes to graduation rate, green being the next. And it's, it's a testament that our English learners are there.
So it's good to be blue, like the Dodgers.
We are consistently blue.
Like the Dodgers.
Like the Dodgers.
Well, and what's interesting about that, right, is the dashboard is taking into account growth for to get to blue, right? You have to already have an excellent number and then still be growing it, which I don't know how we continue to grow from 96%. So I don't know that we should set the expectation that we'll always be there.
Yeah, I don't know that we'll stay blue.
Um, but it's just, it's a real testament to the work of the team. So, thank you.
Just like Dodgers, we just won, we won another one, right? Thank you. All right, any other questions? Thank you, Dr. Andrews.
Thank you.
You can clap, it's all right. That was a good. 12, new and unfinished business. 12A adoption of Resolution 36 proclaiming May 18, 2025 as Speech Pathologist Day.
So moved that we accept May 18th as Speech Pathologist Day.
Motion, can I get a second, please?
Second.
Second by Dr. Weisberg. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes unanimously. Would you like to read the resolution?
I would, because my youngest child is a speech pathologist.
All right, there you go.
Yes. I have it right here. Hang on, please. Sorry. Thank you. Okay. Where, oh, Resolution 36 proclaiming May 18, 2025 as Day of the Speech Language Pathologist. Whereas May 18 is National Speech Pathologist Day, which celebrates the contribution speech-language pathologists make to the community. And whereas May is Better Hearing and Speech Month, established to provide an opportunity to raise awareness about communication disorders and the role of American Speech Language Hearing Association members in providing life-altering treatment. And whereas speech-language pathologists are experts in communication and are in a highly specialized field focused on the assessment, diagnosis, and treatment of communication disorders. And whereas there are over 188,000 certified speech-language pathologists in the United States, and over half of those work in educational settings. And whereas in California, for individuals who receive special education services, approximately 165,000 students are designated as having a speech or language impairment. And in the Burbank Unified School District, approximately 1,000 students are designated as having a speech or language impairment. And whereas 27 speech-language pathologists and four speech-language pathology assistants provide services in the Burbank Unified School District to students ranging from three to 22 years of age in all grades from preschool to transition age. And whereas speech-language pathologists provide therapy to students with delays and disorders in the areas of semantics, syntax, morphology, pragmatics, voice, fluency, as in stuttering, articulation, and um, phonological processing in order to help them effectively communicate and access the curriculum in the educational setting. And whereas speech-language pathologists carry out duties, including evaluating communication skills, determining communication delays and disorders, writing comprehensive assessment reports, identifying service and support options, creating and carrying out individual education programs, IEPs, acting as case managers, providing direct therapy services, collecting progress data, completing planning, consulting, did I skip one? Completing progress reports, participating as a member of student success teams, assisting with transition planning, consulting with school staff, families, and interdisciplinary teams, and supervising student speech-language pathologists in training. And whereas California speech-language pathologists are among the best educated with high qualification standards and ongoing continuing education requirements, and hold undergraduate and graduate degrees specific to the fields of communicative disorders, and are credentialed by the State of California, commonly hold their certificate of clinical competence in speech-language pathology, and generally maintain California state licensing. And whereas speech-language pathologists demonstrate a commitment to make a difference in people's lives and are dedicated to continuous learning and empowering others. And whereas the Board of Education and leadership of the Burbank Unified School District recognize the vital role of speech-language pathologists, and express strong support and gratitude to past and present speech-language pathologists and speech-language pathology assistants for their commitment and dedication to the students and staff of the Burbank Unified School District. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education recognizes May 18, 2025 as Day of the Speech Language Pathologist in the Burbank Unified School District.
Wow.
Wow.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's some water.
I know, right?
All right.
I do, oh, I do have to say, going through that process with her, it was tough. It was a lot of parts to it. Um, and a lot of times she had to go, so my hat's off to our speech length, but she had to go find placement for herself in order to achieve all the different criteria that was expected so she could. in order to achieve all the different criteria that was expected so she could get her licensing. So, yes, hats off to all our speech-language pathologists. It was not an easy path and we thank you for your work.
Thank you, and we're very proud of her.
Very.
Twelve B, adoption of Resolution Thirty-Seven proclaiming April twenty-twenty-five as the Burbank Unified School District's Arab-American Heritage Month.
Dr. Uga Konian.
Dr. Weisberg.
I move that we adopt Resolution Thirty-Seven as written.
I have a motion by Dr. Weisberg, second by Vice President Kamkar. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Um, Dr. Weisberg, please read the resolution. Then we're going to ask for Dr. Macias to come up to the podium.
He's already here. Uh, Resolution Thirty-Seven proclaiming April twenty-twenty-five the Burbank Unified School District's Arab-American Heritage Month. Whereas the Burbank Unified School District acknowledges the rich cultural heritage and significant contributions of Arab-Americans to the history, culture, and achievements of the United States. And whereas National Arab-American Heritage Month is said, celebrated annually in April to honor the diverse traditions, customs, and history of Arab-Americans. And whereas Arab-Americans have made substantial contributions in various fields, including education, business, science, technology, medicine, government, and the arts. And whereas the Burbank Unified School District is committed to fostering an inclusive environment that respects and values the diversity of its students, staff, and community members. And whereas recognizing National Arab-American Heritage Month provides an opportunity to educate students in the community about the rich cultural heritage and contributions of Arab-Americans, promoting understanding, respect, and appreciation for diversity. It also provides opportunities to counter misconceptions and highlight the significant role Arab-Americans play in our community. And now therefore be it resolved that the Burbank Unified School District hereby recognizes April as National Arab-American Heritage Month and encourages schools, educators, and students to engage in activities and programs that celebrate and honor the contributions of Arab-Americans' heritage, culture, and history to foster a more inclusive and respectful community.
Thank you. Dr. Macia.
Good evening, distinguished board members, to our superintendent and district staff and our Burbank Unified Community and members here to share this experience. We do have book recommendations. Uh, and as always, as we've done, we want to thank our library coordinators who've collaborated with, suggested, vetted. Uh, in addition to that, I did reach out to AXA colleagues throughout the region as well to make sure that we were doing right by this and honoring the right way. So these books offer meaningful stories that honor Arab-American heritage and provide valuable insights into diverse cultural experiences. For our elementary, if we can get the slides up, projected and presented. For our elementary school, uh, selection, The Arabic Quilt, An Immigrant Story by Aya Khalil. This picture book tells the story of Kanzi, a young girl who feels out of place at her new school in the United States. Through her grandmother's quilt, she finds a connection to her Egyptian heritage and learns to embrace her identity. The other suggested reading, The Turtle of Oman by Naomi Shihab Nai. A ref is moving from Oman to Michigan and is afraid to leave his home. His grandfather helps him understand that his loved ones will always be with him in his heart. For our middle school, two suggested readings here in books. A Kid's Guide to Arab-American History by Yvonne Joakim Dennis and Maha Adasi. This book dispels stereotypes and explores the diverse cultures, histories, and contributions of Arab-Americans. It includes activities and biographies of notable Arab-Americans. The second reading, uh, suggestion, The Night Diary by Vera Hiranandani. Although not specifically about Arab-Americans, this book provides a perspective on the partition of India, which can be a valuable addition to understanding diverse cultural histories. And for our high school students' suggested reading, A Map of Sultan Stars by Zain Hukadar. This novel intertwines the story of a modern Syrian refugee with the historical tale of a medieval mapmaker's apprentice, offering a rich narrative about heritage and identity. And the last suggestion for our high school students, The Beauty of Your Face by Sahar Mustafa. The Beauty of Your Face navigates a country growing ever more divided. Afaf Rahman, the daughter of Palestinian immigrants, is the principal of Nuruddin School for Girls, a Muslim school in the Chicago suburbs. We are swept back through the, her memories, the bigotry she faced as a child, her mother's dreams of returning to Palestine, and the devastating disappearance of her older sister that tore her family apart. The Beauty of Your Face is a profound and poignant exploration of a woman's life in a nation at odds with its ideals. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Macias. All right, twelve C. I have to read this whole thing. Adoption of Resolution Thirty-Eight, authorizing the issuance and sales of twenty-twenty-five refunding general obligation bonds in the aggregate principal amount of not to exceed sixty-four thou, sixty-four million. Right? Okay, can I get a motion pass twelve C, please? Thank you.
So moved.
Okay, I have a, that one goes to, uh, Dr. Weisberg. Can I get a second? Okay, that one goes to, uh, uh, Clerk Tabit. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes unanimously. Um, sure. Yeah, you want to talk about it?
I would love to talk about it. Board members, you have never seen someone over the age of five more excited for fifty cents. Uh, the reason, what we're doing here is we are refunding, um, prior bonds, which is another way of, you can think of as refinancing, um, existing bond debt. What this does is save fifty cents per hundred thousand dollars of assessed value over a ten-year period. But fifty cents adds up. It's two point five million dollars that we are saving Burbank taxpayers from our prior bond by doing this reissuance, this refunding. Um, that's huge. Uh, again, we talked earlier about being good stewards of these dollars. In twenty-twenty, we took advantage of a really advantageous interest rate market where we refinanced back then some debt. We were able to save taxpayers in excess of three million dollars. However, if you think back to twenty-twenty, again, interest rates were really low. So if you read this closely, which I know each of you did, you may be saying, well, why are we in a better interest rate market now than we were back then? That doesn't make sense. That's not intuitive. The reason was that we took, we were aggressive in twenty-twenty and we actually did this refunding prior to the, the period that is permitted to maintain tax-exempt status. So that refunding in twenty-twenty was not through tax-exempt bonds. And that's why the interest rate was actually higher than right now tax-exempt bonds are. So I know it's really a bit in the weeds or complicated, but what we're saying is that we saved over three million dollars five years ago and we're saving another two point five million dollars today. We also are going to be able to yield a better rate on the new issuance that we'll be bringing forward next month on Measure ABC. Because by being able to group these two fundings together, it creates efficiencies that drive down that interest rate also. This resolution does not bind us to do the refunding. Uh, you know, we all are, um, watching with, uh, some level of anxiety what's happening in the marketplace, uh, of, of investments these days. Um, if something drastically changes, either in federal policy or in the, uh, the general bond market, that would not allow us to save the requisite savings, then we don't move forward with this. This just allows us to contain to pursue it, um, and, uh, ensure that we are able to realize savings for the community. So this is, you know, something I'm very excited about. Like I said, it, it, for the average taxpayer, it saves them about four dollars a year. For our largest property owner in Burbank, one of the studios, it will save them sixty thousand dollars over the life of these ten-year bonds. So, I mean, these are not small figures for larger, uh, larger business and larger commercial properties. But regardless, on the whole, for our community, two point five million dollars in savings.
Dr. Weisberg.
I think it's huge and I wonder if this is something that we, whether it's like in E! News or whatever. I think it's something we should be communicating with our community. Um, I know it's hard. I mean, you, I'm always like the case study for, do I even get what you're saying? But I do. Um, but I think this would be a really valuable thing because I think one of the things we've been prioritizing is communication about the bond and our fiscal stability, which I think is really strong and getting stronger. So if there's a way to communicate this out so people know, I, I think that would be great.
Vice President Kamkar.
I would just suggest that we wait to communicate it until we actually do it.
Oh, yeah.
Um, and I just wanted to say you're welcome for allowing you the chance to use that joke that I am sure you saved up all day long. And it was really good. Good job, Mr. Kam.
Thank you, Assistant Superintendent Kamkar. That was exciting news. Now I can afford to buy eggs with the four-dollar savings. That was a joke. Egg. A egg, yes. Easter is here, everyone. All right, thank you for that, uh, wonderful report. Uh, every dollar we save, right? So, twelve D, adoption of Resolution Thirty-Nine proclaiming April twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five as the Burbank Unified School District's Day of Commemoration of the Armenian Genocide of nineteen fifteen, nineteen twenty-three. I will be pa, motioning this resolution.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by yours truly and seconded by Dr. Weisberg. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes unanimously. Resolution Thirty-Nine proclaiming April twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five as the Burbank Unified School District's Day of Commemoration of the Armenian Genocide of nineteen fifteen to nineteen twenty-three. Whereas the Armenian genocide of nineteen fifteen to nineteen twenty-three is widely recognized by historians and genocide scholar as the first genocide of the twentieth century. And since nineteen nineteen, April twenty-fourth has been designated as a day of remembrance and commemoration of the inhumane atrocities committed by the Ottoman Turks in carrying out the systematic annihilation of more than one mil, one point five million Armenian women, children, and men during World War One. And whereas many countries, including Argentina, Austria, Belgium, Bolivia, Brazil, Canada, Chile, Cyprus, Czech Republic, Denmark, France, Germany, Greece, Italy, Lebanon, Lithuania, Luxembourg, Uruguay, Vatican City, Venezuela, and, I'm sorry, and then Netherlands, sorry, Paraguay, Poland, Russia, Slovakia, sorry, Slovakia, Sweden, Switzerland, United States of America, Uruguay, Vatican City, Venezuela, and the entirety of the fifty United States of America, including California, recognizes the atrocities perpetrated by the Ottoman Empire during the years of nineteen fifteen to nineteen twenty-three as genocide. And whereas the state of California has been at the forefront of encouraging and promoting a curriculum relating to human rights and genocide in order to empower future generations to prevent recurrences of genocide. And whereas the Burbank Unified School District has a significant Armenian student population, many of whom have family members who have experienced firsthand the horror and evil of the Armenian genocide, as well as the avoidance of the recognition or outright denial by many countries of the Armenian genocide. And whereas the Burbank Unified School District continues to provide teacher training workshops and educational resources about all historic genocides, including the Armenian genocides, to all its high school social study teachers and students. Now therefore be it resolved, the Burbank Unified School District Board of Education hereby designates April twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five as the Burbank Unified School District's Day of Commemoration of the Armenian Genocide of nineteen fifteen and twenty-three. And it's going, and in, in, and in doing so, will ensure that the Armenian genocide is properly taught to its faculty, student body, and the community at large. And again, I'm sorry, I've, I've read this many, many years, but I always get emotional. So I apologize, um, to my colleagues. It's still difficult because my country is still facing injustice as we speak. Um, but I do want to, again, thank the district and all my colleagues, uh, you know, being supportive of this. Um, Dr. Superintendent Parama, I know that, you know, we had some questions from parents about April twenty-fourth, it being a holiday. Can you just clear that on to?
Yes.
For the, the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, in our calendar committee that was approved by the board, um, that day will now be a pupil-free day. So students will not be attending school. Staff members, also, they have an opportunity to use floating holidays during that time period if they're unable to come to work as, as they're, um, using this day as a remembrance. So that'll be for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year.
So next week, we are still expecting people to come to school and work?
Yes, it's next week. However, our, um, employees do have that option of the floating holiday to use.
Important just to clarify, too, the floating holiday is something we put into place, was it this year? Um, so that people observing specific religious holidays or meaningful days of remembrance don't have to use personal days to do that. And I think this is a prime example of, of how important that is. So I appreciate the district, uh, working really hard to make that happen.
And for our millions of our viewers, this Saturday, I'm going to bring it up again. Hey, you never know, maybe we do have a million viewers. Um, this Saturday at ten o'clock in front of the, uh, Burbank's, uh, city staff, there will be a ceremony, um, of the Armenian Genocide Commemorations brought to you by the Armenian National Committee of Burbank. We are expecting our councilpeople to be there, our own Assembly Member Nick Schultz and Congresswoman also, Laura Friedman will be there. And I saw my colleagues will be there as well. Um, so if you're there, uh, come and, uh, you know, pay respect to one point five million women and children and individuals who were perished in the first genocide of the twentieth century. Next, we're going to, um, twelve E, Approval of Board Policy and Administrative Regulations, five-one-four-eight, Child Care and Development. Dr. Knappick.
This proposed revision is mainly for the state subsidized preschool. Revisions include an allowance for distance learning when the distance, when the conditions call for it. It allows for transitional kindergarten students to attend state preschool and be credited as transitional kindergarten students. The change also moves all of the code from education code to the welfare and institutions code. So California went ahead and moved state preschool code, once again, from education code to the welfare institutions code. And then finally, there is an allowance by law to go ahead and remove a child from the state preschool program based on behavior. But in order for that to happen, we have to make certain that we go ahead and assess the child for a disability or for behavioral needs. So it's not just a flat-out, you have bad behavior and you're going to leave. There has to be due process to go ahead and identify the actual reasons why the child's acting like they are. And then as a last, very last resort, remove the child from the program.
Thank you. Um, any questions? Can I get a motion, please? Moved by Clerk Tabit, seconded by Vice President Panser Kamkar. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes unanimously. Twelve F, Approval of the.
We already did that.
Oh, yes.
Twelve G.
Twelve G, Approval of Board Policy of Administrative Regulation, six-one-seven-three, Education for Children Experiencing Homelessness. Dr. Knappick.
So this revision just mainly reflects things that we're already doing as required by education code, but our policy has not been updated for a few years. And so now this is an upgrade to go ahead and just match it to education code. But we've already been doing, like the housing questionnaire, we've been doing for years.
Dr. Weisberg.
I have a couple of questions. Um, so, not so much about the policy, but about what the policy references. So I wondered what kind of professional development we offer. And I know that we do separate it out, but the, it, the attendance, achievement, graduation, retention rates for our, and I know we have a very small number of students experiencing homelessness. So I guess my two questions would be, PD, have we seen an increase in our students experiencing homelessness post-fire and also post the uptick in, uh, aggressive ICE raids and, and people with maybe, um, ton, like, immigration status?
Go ahead.
We've not experienced an uptick yet, you know, in terms of the numbers of students experiencing homelessness. However, we're on the lookout always for them. And as students enroll, we ask the question about homelessness.
Okay.
And then in terms of PD.
Yeah.
Melissa Dreschler, who works in the Student Services Office, does provide professional development to our administrators and to our counselors with regards to homelessness.
I would love to have her come at some point and talk a little bit about.
Sure.
Uh, the professional, because I, I have a similar question for the English learner policy, which is what's the PD look like there? Um, the last question I had was about, um, students experiencing homelessness, being able to remain for that fifth year. How, do we know the percentage of, how often that happens?
It doesn't happen very often.
Okay.
Uh, and, and, uh, as Dr. Knappick said, the number of students that have been identified as homeless is very small.
Right.
And, and I will also say that, uh, Melinda, it's one of her sole, uh, jobs is to really work with that population.
Yeah, she's great at it. She's phenomenal.
She goes to schools all the time and meets with them and, and does PD. But I think you're right, uh, we should have. We should have a presentation with that so that the board and the public know what that looks like.
She does such a great job. It'd be great for people to hear about that work.
Sure.
And great for me, too.
All right. And I know that after, I have a comment after, but it's okay. Do we have a, we have a motion?
So moved.
Okay, moved by Dr. Weisberg, seconded by Vice President Ponser Kamkar. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Dr. Paramo, in the lieu of last week's raids in LA Unified, are we still telling our staff what to do in case? Because again, I wouldn't be surprised if.
Yes, we have worked very closely with our site leaders to know exactly how to deal with this. We were very proactive in January when we got wind that this was likely to happen. And we not only met with our administrative staff, but we also met with our classified staff to train them. So we have protocols in place for sure. And we have recently resent out the red cards for our families so that their children can carry that with them and know their rights.
Vice President Kamkar.
Are we able to put those into like folders and backpacks? I know that like our local PTA has been asking if they can help in any fashion there? Because I want to, I know they want to make sure that parents actually get the information. They may not read emails or whatever.
So the request would be for the district to make hard copies and then just give them to the kids to take home? We can do that. In addition to what they have electronically, we can also do that. The good thing about the electronic one is that it's translated into so many different languages, which is not work we actually did. It's work that the county did. And so when they have that link, they can actually get it in Armenian or Ukrainian or Russian or whatever language is spoken at home, but we can also make the hard copies.
Yeah, I think there's, there's an anxiety for people that really want to help, right? And so if we're gonna do that, I think we should, we should reach out to PTA especially because I think they may be willing to put in some of the manpower to do it because it is an actual thing to do it. But I can appreciate that the online resources could much more thorough.
I would also say too that as long as we're giving it to every student, because I know that part of the issue when we have the hard copy versions is that people are afraid to take them because it makes them feel like there's a target on their back. So if we're giving it to every student, I think that alleviates some of that anxiety. But I think, so I think putting them out is less effective because I don't think people who maybe actually need them are gonna feel comfortable taking them. But I think giving them out to students, and I know they say on, this is relevant for both citizens and people who aren't citizens, but I think it's gotta be either just all online or we hand them to everybody.
I think, yeah, that's absolutely not a problem. And I see the critical nature of doing that for our elementary kids. So that I can calibrate with you. Are you folks thinking that you want to do that with middle school and high school? And the only reason why I ask is because a lot of the older kids are keeping that electronically and just using their phone and looking at it when they need to look at it. So elementary seems very reasonable to me. Are you guys okay with electronic for the rest?
I think Huerta already gave them out to all their students. I might be wrong about that. So it's worth checking to see if any of our secondary schools have already done it.
Will do. I'll work with Dr. Merces on that.
And I think also, digital divide is still a concern. Not every parent has access to digital format. So, you know, that's something that, you know, I think it's important. All right. Thank you, Dr. Paramo. 12H, Approval of Board Policy and Administrative Regulation 6174, Education for English Learners. Dr. Knappick.
So once again, this policy change is just a revision towards upgrading the board policy and the administrative regulation to be aligned to education code. So in it, there is a definition of what a long-term English learner is. And that would be a person who has not attained proficiency within seven years of their initial classification. It also talks about reclassification also being realigned towards state requirements, too.
Dr. Weisberg.
Same question as before. I'd be really interested to know the kind of PD we provide, especially it says in there, the teachers who don't work directly with EL students. Just, I think it'd be really informative for all of us.
We can give you a list of everything they get because the ELD specialists, each of the schools provide the direct training and the Jennifer Goldenberg, too.
I would love that, thank you.
Share with you.
Yes, Vice President Kamkar.
You know I couldn't go more than one item without questions.
One question?
It's not possible. So one of the things that kind of occurred to me here was that there's a lot of steps here for parents to take. And I'm wondering, how do we make this accessible to parents who speak other languages? Given that it's a piece for language development and English language development in particular. So like, do our parents who speak other languages know about the processes that are outlined here?
Absolutely, because the ELD specialists, they meet with parents.
Okay.
To talk through them.
And so all of this is like translated in multiple languages? And, okay, awesome. That's great.
It even says it in there that we, that like has to get.
Yep. Thank goodness.
All right, can I get a motion in a second?
Second.
Vice President Ponser Kamkar, seconded by Dr. Weisberg. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. 12I, Approval of Board Policy 6142.7, Physical Education and Activity. Dr. Knappick.
Once again, this is just realignment, realigning board policy to education code. And so we needed to add student ethnicity, native language, race, and religion in terms of we wouldn't discriminate physical education based on those categories. Yeah.
All right, can I have a motion in a second, please?
Second.
Moved by Vice President Ponser Kamkar, seconded by Dr. Weisberg. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. 12J, Approval of Award of Contract, Southland Inc. Bid 24250.29, Clay Tile Roof Placement, William McKinley Elementary School, Bont, Assistant Superintendent Cantwell.
The next two items are connected. The first is for the contractor. The second is for the materials. The auditorium at McKinley was experiencing significant leaks as we experienced rain in February that really brought to light. This was after we already had begun the bid process for the broader roofing projects. This also is not a site that we were intending to do this summer. And so that's why you only are seeing a single building. It's again, really an emergency repair. When we talked last year about failing roofs, this is a clear example that requires immediate replacement. And so we're asking for approval on the low bid, Southland Roofing.
Can I get a motion in a second, please?
So moved.
Moved by Clark Tabit, seconded by Vice President Ponser Kamkar. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And 12K, we don't need explanation. You just went over it. Can I get a motion in a second on 12K, please?
Second.
Moved by Vice President Ponser Kamkar, seconded by Dr., I mean, Clark Tabit.
My father will be so proud.
Thank you. Can I, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. 12, what is that, a I or one?
L.
L. None of the above. Sorry, A, B, C, D. Approval of comparable experience criteria for transitional kindergarten teacher qualification. Ms. Rochenko.
Yes, the purpose of this board item is to add additional criteria that we can, the board can establish so that our TK teachers can make sure that they're in compliance with the CTC and that they have the comparable experience. And we have a list of different ways that account for comparable experience that will be approved by the CTC. And that way, we can make sure our teachers are fully qualified.
Vice President Kamkar.
So just to clarify, the bullets under discussion issues are other ways to qualify for the small letter B above. Is that right?
That is correct.
Okay, cool. Because I know I was at Edison, I think, and she was saying like, we have a teacher who's taught kindergarten for many years, has taught TK, and we now need to figure out an alternative way to get her certified. So thank you for doing this. I know it's all of a sudden, like, changed the requirements, but this is great.
Can you briefly talk? Sorry, I didn't get acknowledged. Thank you. Hello. How many of our teachers are gonna be impacted by this? Because to echo what Vice President Kamkar said, this was a very sudden change, of course, issued on high to us to enforce. So it's not, I think it's important for us to say it's not, we do not have inexperienced, unprepared, unqualified teachers teaching kindergarten. It's really important that all our teachers are qualified. They're doing a great job. This is a new thing that was put into place very recently that we have been racing to meet. So this isn't because our teachers haven't been doing a good job. But could you talk a little bit about how many will be impacted?
I don't know the exact number we were just discussing, but about eight of them still are out of compliance a bit. Some of them, it's just small amounts. They have some units, but not all units of 24. So each person, that's a different degree. So with the new additional criteria for that comparable experience part will really help us to make sure everybody's in compliance, particularly with the 24, as Ms. Ponser Kamkar pointed out as for B, which is the 24 units of education.
And are we gonna foot the bill for that?
Yeah, if they do need to have their 24 units, we actually worked, met with, Peter and I met with LA ACC and they have LA Valley College, LA VC. And they have a program.
Awesome.
We met with our TK teachers that were impacted by this. And so they have a really good program and we can help support them through that.
Thank you.
All right, can I get a motion in a second, please?
Second.
Moved by Vice President Ponser Kamkar, seconded by Clark Tabit. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes unanimously. 13, Consent Agenda. Can I get a motion? Proof of Items 13A through 13R as presented. Yes.
So moved.
Can I get a second? You guys are pausing for a consent agenda item.
I just, I just have a.
Thank you.
I don't want to pull something out, but I'd like to highlight, where was it? 13K. That is the new automatic gate conversion at Burbank High. I just want to say thumbs up. That was, I think the safety, the hazard that it was prior and what it is now, it's really good. And so, long time coming, whoever figured that out. Thank you so much. I just needed a highlight. Was it you, Andy?
No, it was not, it was not, or Mr. Maxwell.
Okay. See, Dr. Maxwell and I, Dr. Tabit, just gotta boost up tonight. It does, so we'll just go with that.
As long as you graduated from USC.
Yeah, didn't we all? Fight on. Okay. But I just didn't want to, I didn't want to just let that go because it was a job well done. So, thank you for that.
Thank you, and thank you. See, we care about even our gates and everything.
We do.
Thank you.
Because it's the safety of our faculty and staff that come in and out of that gate every day onto a really busy street. And now they don't. We have not voted.
We had a motion, we had a first. Yeah, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes unanimously. Thank you, and thank you, Clark Tabit.
You're so welcome.
Yeah, I'm so proud of this board. We all read everything. We even talk about gates and all that fun stuff. So thank you. Now, for retirements. We have several of them. Silva Josephina, Children's Center teacher, started services at 10:09, 2003, just, and effective date would be, yeah. So 10:09, 2003, and just went to retirement. Henry Alexander, Borough High School, CTE teacher, began the services in 12:04, 2000. Jerome Maladi, Borough High School teacher. Oh, Jer.
Jerome, what was it?
Did I say Jerome? Oh, that's Jerry Maladi, are Jerry Maladi? Oh, he's, oh, yeah, I saw the post. Jerry retired.
Not yet, at the end of the year.
Oh, end of the year, I'm sorry. Jerry, I'm sorry, I wasn't expecting you to retire. So yes, Jerry Maladi, Malady, sorry, long night, sorry. Jerry, congratulations. Borough High School teacher, began services at 9:18, 2000. Wow. And Naomi Bizair Lewis, did I say this right? Right? Thank you. Adult school, oh. Started services in 2024. So to all of our retirees, thank you for your services. Actually, there's a second page. Thank you, thank you, Cindy. See, last items, we're retired, it's a long night. She puts big in red. Page two, thank you, that's why we love you. Ismael Lopez, Technology Support Specialist, Second Level, 324, 2025. And Gail Ricota, Behavior Interventional Assistant, 522, 2020, 2025. Again, congratulations to our retirees. We're gonna miss you. And with that said, Board Member Reports. Dr. Weisberg.
Hey, thanks. This'll be quick. A big thank you to Student Mental Health Board, who I met with last week. We had like a two-hour meeting, it was fantastic. I'm looking forward to sharing my notes with everybody on that. And I just wanted to know if we could adjourn tonight's meeting in honor of the young lives that we're taking at Florida State University in the 18th school shooting on a college campus in 2025, 81st mass shooting of the year. Hopefully that, the two people that have passed, that remains two, but it's still too, too many.
Board Member Kano.
Just, I was, went to the Seventh Annual Armenian Genocide, Transgenerational Effects and Healing[1592.49] and Healing that was done by the LA County Department of Mental Health. And it was over at the Armenian Cultural Foundation Center. And made some really, it was really interesting just, and made some nice connections with people from LA County Department of Health. So.
Well, I think I celebrated the, the fact that our school district is still an arts district because I attended the Jazz Night at Burbank High that with, with Mrs. Conno, with Lorette. And we enjoyed John Muir's jazz quartet, I think that was? Combo. And Burbank High's along with some professional groups. Holy cow. Yeah, they're really good. The middle school kids were amazing. So the high school kids were even more amazing, if that's possible. And then you throw in those professionals, and it was a great night of some really solid jazz. Really impressed. And then the next week, I also attended Music is Instrumental fundraiser, where combined groups, are you the violin player?
No, I mean in choir.
You're in choir. Sorry about that. Yes. So both choirs performed Burbank and Burrows. Our concert band from Burrows, the orchestra from Burbank High performed. They, I don't know if you know, the Music at Play group is the brother and sister of very famous composer John Williams. And they put a lot of money out to bring in the professional musicians to play and conducted by a professional conductor. They spend some, some PD time with the kids going through and learning. And the talent is just amazing. So thank you for that opportunity to enjoy some live music that we don't always get to do. And what else? I've done a lot this, this time. PTA Gala. Wow. Yeah, that's my, one of my favorite nights, especially when they have it at the, what is the name of that? Deluxe. Wow, the food. I say wow a lot, don't I? But I get, food was amazing. It just, it was, it was plentiful. I just kept eating and eating and eating, and it was wonderful. So thank you to PTA for your wonderful celebration honoring all of our wonderful volunteers because nothing would get done in this district without those volunteers. So thank you. The extra stuff. I think, I think that was kind of a lot. Did I miss anything? Nope. Okay. Thanks. Oh, one, one thing in conversation, I did meet with a couple people. I met with Gavin Cho from Burbank Arts and Ed Foundation. I met with the mayor. We talked about budgets. And we could have some of theirs. We'd be happy. She's trying. She said, I'll ask, you know, but whatever, I asked. But an interesting subject came up. I know we're having trouble. I shouldn't do this here. I should just call you, but I'll just call you. Thank you.
Vice President Ponser Campcor.
I over excited myself over the last two weeks considerably, but after the last meeting, Dr. Macias and I went to Muir for their documentary film festival and parent lunch and a visit from JPL. They were having an action packed today. It was very good. We got run over by a Mars rover model that there's, so there's a picture somewhere of Dr. Macias, Dr. Miller, and I getting run over by a rover. I don't know who has it, frankly. It's somewhere out there. But it was really lovely to get to see all the great stuff happening at Muir. We talked about the All City Track Meet. That was awesome. My kids were very sugared up. Thank you, Dr. Arkanian. But we had a great time. And it was very cool. I visited, a couple meetings that I had were with, I attended Burbank Council PTA, talking about enrollment and putting out the push for getting, talking to building managers and HR folks about how to get more students in on permits. And Dr. Paramo and Mr. Cantwell and I went to the chamber today to talk generally about what a partial tax would look like and kind of dispel some rumors that are out there in the community. I also attended PTA. Congratulations to all of those award recipients. And then I know, it sounds like a couple other folks did as well, but I scooped ice cream for Burbank Arts and Education Foundation. I have a future career. Also with Dr. Macias. Dr. Macias and I spent a lot of time together over the last two weeks. He didn't know that he was, I didn't actually eat any ice cream even after, but you know, as I told Dr. Macias, I had ice cream for lunch that day, so I didn't need to have.
There, there were hundreds of people there. By the time you scoop, 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 and it's all over you.
Yeah.
You don't want to eat any ice cream.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was covered in chocolate.
I was really good at scooping ice cream, though, by the end of it. Probably a little too good. And then the last thing I'll say is, last Friday, the Masons gave out their awards for essays, for student essays and for teachers. And I was, I judged the middle school essay contest, which was very fun. So I remember that winner, but I don't remember the elementary and high school winners. But all the essays were around actions that students can take around educating people about climate change. And so Griffin Bierman was the middle school essay winner. I think he's at Muir. And so he had this idea about like having climate superheroes that they could, the middle school kids could go and talk to the elementary school kids. It was very cute. And then I just want to recognize our Masonic teachers that won awards, Catherine Colvin from Providencia, Wayne Tipton from Huerta, and Gerard Mendez from JBHS. And thank you to Dr. Anders for, I think, working really closely with Masons on presenting and all of that. But it was good to see staff there and lots of principals. And it was a really lovely, lovely evening. So thank you to the Masons for supporting our students and teachers. That's all I have.
Can I add one thing? I did, I was, sorry, I was busy. I drove down to Huntington Beach to, to see our Burrows build and design group. Yeah, it was cool.
They're gonna tell us next meeting.
Yeah. They had a hectic schedule. It was two days for design-build competition. Then they came back that night on a Thursday night, put away their supplies, reloaded the supplies, and went back out on the same night to Ontario for Skills USA competition. So yeah, it was. So big kudos to Mr. Menendez, who just, wow, he really puts out a good program.
Is there a way for board members to get notified about things like the scholar, like, I didn't know when, I didn't know that was happening. And obviously, we can't all go to all things, but...
I didn't know about it either.
We didn't know about it either.
I'm sorry. That was my fault. I will make sure we do that.
Come on, John, get it together. All right.
I'm just getting older. That's, and I forget.
So just to wrap it up, again, I did also join our, you know, we had a table at the Council PTA. Congratulations. It's a great event. And I always have to tell people disclaimer that those appetizers are just appetizers because you know how much food we get. So I apologize, but I have to say, because sometimes people fill up thinking it's dinner, then you get the fish, then you get the chicken, then you get the beef. So, so, so thank you for those of who listened because, because we had a lot of food and it was great. And thank you to everyone, the fish was great. I did also...
Your favorite dish, too. I don't know what it's called. It was delicious.
It's called delicious.
Okay.
I did attend the Miller multicultural event. Again, I want to, once again, thank Dr. Knappich, our Assistant Superintendent. Those of you who know, we started this thing. It was great. And it has grown now. We have it in other schools. But I'm telling you, talk about food, by the way. We had different countries with different food. We even had a couple from, from Georgia that were serving Southern tea, you know, the type, sweet tea, Georgia sweet tea. Sorry, I'm sorry. I'm thinking a drink. I told them to put some bourbon in it, but you know, they didn't. Huh? Yes.
They did?
No, they had, they had, and they had hush puppies. Yeah, but it was the iced tea and the only thing missing was bourbon, but you know. Yeah, thank you. We're in elementary school. Thank you. But again, just great music, performances. So those of you, again, you can still attend these events and support the cause. You don't have to necessarily be part of that school if you don't want to. It was just wonderful. It gets bigger and bigger every year. So thank you, Dr. Knappich, as well. I also want to thank my dear friend, Diana Rana, from our, yeah, so her daughters were, she invited me to the Burrows Cheer event, annual event they had, because I guess her daughter is part of the group. It was great. And lots of Lala, by the way, as a senior class. So hi, Lala. It was good to see you. What else? And we talked about the track event. That was great. And I will finish with this. One of my former colleagues invited me. I was very honored to be part of what is called Alliance for Better Community. And this was a celebration of the importance of multilingualism. And they did a video on me where I spoke about the power of speaking different languages. And this was done by my friend, Vanessa R. Mayo, from the ABC program. And it was just great because, you know, when I first came to United States, I was told not to speak my language. I was like, don't speak it, just speak English. It's very common, actually. I know actually families with their children or themselves don't speak their mother language anymore because they were asked not to, you know? And, and this program was wonderful because we were celebrating the power of, we called it superpower, to speak different languages, especially now in global, you know, world, global markets, speaking a second, third, in my case, fourth language. It's really beneficial. So I think that's something, I've talked about it before, but I think we need to even look more into providing classes in different languages as well because I think that adds a bonus and a superpower to our, not only students, but also to the parents. So thank you for inviting me. And, and with that said, we're gonna, Ms. Weisberg, you wanna, we're gonna adjourn the meeting. If you want to just say what the meeting was adjourned. It was a long...
Where'd my doctor go?
Dr. Weisberg.
Thanks. Yeah, we'll adjourn tonight's meeting in honor of the lives lost at Florida State University school shooting.